Thank you. Thank you all for coming. I got the comment cards. We're gonna, if you, I appreciate you coming and I appreciate you waiting. We've tried to start a little early and get everything, but it's been a full night. So we are gonna listen, everybody. We have a really great presentation. We may move up and get through and then we'll make sure everybody gets their chance that's turning in a card. And I think, I think you all want public comment, item C. If somebody turned in something for something else, signal me, because I wanna, I wanna get it right, okay? And I'm waiting for the rest of the board to come in. Okay. Great. Thanks. Okay. Thank you again. We're officially back from closed session. There's no reportable actions for the board to take. We will be reconvening back in a closed session at the end of the public meeting, but we wanted to get out here for all of you, because we know how patient you have been. And so again, I wanted just to say thank you. I know you're all here, because you care about this college and we are looking forward to hearing from you. So we are going to have the pledge of allegiance and I've asked trustee Fellows leading the pledge.
Please stand. Place your hand over your heart if you have to do. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay. So we are at, we are at introductions and Dr. Rocha, do you have any introductions?
I do not, President Martin.
Okay, then trustee Bond.
I'd like to introduce Alex Kledjian. He is a student at PCC and he's declared his candidacy for the Board of Trustees. And I introduced Alex to the board last summer and he's a terrific young man from La Cuenada, Flint Ridge. And he was also one of those students I always called upon and told me what a great idea the calendar change would be and how it would help him as a student. And also as a student of Professor Marhine's, he had told me how, the challenge about how faculty members are using class time to lobby about contract negotiations. So I'm appreciative and welcome Alex to the race.
Okay, that wasn't the... Okay. All right. Well, okay. And I was working really hard to make it all warm and fuzzy, you know? Okay. What can you say? You know, all right. So we're gonna, we're gonna have the item F, a report on the update and the activities of the PCC Veterans Center, and then we're gonna get to that public comment.
Okay. Thank you, President Martin. Welcome to all. I'd like to call forward, thank you for the privilege of moving F up, because we did not want to wait for two important things. Number one, to hear a report that the board asked for on the current outcomes and wonderful work that the PCC Veterans Center is doing. And also to be able to recognize and congratulate Patricia for her wonderful work. Recently named by Senator Carol Lou as Woman of the Year. So I'm looking through there and I'd ask Professor DeOrange Martin to please come forward and to do your, do your report that we're looking forward to. And then, this is... Thank you. Take all the time, this is a information discussion item, so take all the time you need, Patricia. And then at the end, please don't leave the podium, because President Martin has something for you.
Well, good evening, President Martin, President Rocha, and members of the Board of Trustees. Thank you so much. I'm very humbled. I feel that I share this honor with my PCC family. I'm very grateful for PCC for having afforded me the opportunity to render the service that I'm being recognized for. And it was only possible because of the support of many others here at PCC, so. Tonight, I'll be giving a report of PCC's veterans services, but before I do, I want to briefly preface my report by saying that all the services that we offer here for veterans did not happen because of any one person. It really does take a village. And tonight, I want to thank and recognize that village whose efforts and support made this possible. First of all, I want to thank Carol Calandra, who was an integral part of helping to build PCC's veteran services. We started out a little like Thelma and Louise, or maybe like Janice Dwyer and Michelle Ireland-Gallman, but we're not as funny. I also need to recognize the Veterans Learning Collaborative, Lauren Aronson, Kathy Green, Josh Fleming, and Harold Martin, all of which give over and above of their time, compassion, and for their deep dedication to empower and encourage the veterans in their classes. I cannot begin to thank them for all that they do. Also, Urtah Barker, our unparalleled volunteer mentor coordinator, who this year has gathered 28 mentors to work with one-on-one with our veterans. And I certainly wouldn't be giving this presentation if not for Dr. Olivo and her unwavering support from the small office in the CC building to the Veterans Resource Center in W-108 and all the office and campus politics that it came with. And Dr. Bell, who started at PCC in August 2011 and immediately made it a point to come and visit the VRC and make a personal assessment of everything that we do, and has championed us ever since. And to Dr. Rocha and Bob Miller, who believed that this was the right thing to do for our veterans and knew the Board of Trustees, who made serving our veterans a priority. It is that village that makes this possible. Thank you. So California, as you can see, has over a million veterans residing in the southern part of California. We're the top in the nation. Today, close to a million veterans have used their post-9/11 GI Bill to enroll in college. From 2007 to 2011, there was a 233% increase in veterans enrolled in community colleges in California. And that's not counting active-duty personnel and dependents. And over the next three years, more than 1 million more military members will be released from active duty and almost 25,000 of them are expected to return to LA County. And those numbers come from the enlistment zip codes and doesn't take into consideration all those who were stationed in California and are gonna decide to stay behind for our sunny weather. And finally, according to the last census in 2010, we have, we had more than 13,000 veterans living within our PCC district. Now, obviously, they're not all college-age, but even if just 10% decide to attend PCC, that would more than double our numbers. So how many veterans does PCC have? This spring, we had about 707 veterans, active-duty and reservists, enrolled in classes and about 29% are female veterans. I stuck this in, so that you can see what their attendance represents in funding. Student veterans bring over $3.4 million in FTE revenue to PCC. So who are these veterans? Some of the numbers that stand out here shows that almost a quarter of our veterans are married, about a quarter are from out of state, 84% are unemployed, 20% report having a degree of post-traumatic stress, and 8% report being diagnosed with traumatic brain injury. And I want to point out that these are self-reported and that there are a lot of veterans walking around in denial of their injuries. 70% were deployed and of those that were deployed, 22% had two or more deployments. We have several veterans that were deployed four to five times. These numbers change each semester as new waves of veterans come back. So what are our challenges? Last week, we did a veteran survey for a state report and found that 38% of the student veterans indicated that they were experiencing difficulties that were affecting their educational goals. And almost a third of them had some level of disability and 45% of those students said that they had utilized some kind of psychological services, either through the Veterans Resource Center, referrals, or campus psychological services. It's an eye-opening number and it may be a significant reason why they're having difficulty. But on the positive side, 100% of the respondents said that they would recommend PCC to other veterans. IPRO also ran some statistics for me last week and they found that our student veterans from 2009 to 2011 were almost twice as many of them tested into basic skills English than non-student veterans. But they did test a little better in math. So how are we going to meet these challenges? Or how are we meeting these challenges? Well, here are some of our services that we offer at the Veterans Resource Center. I'm proud to say that in just three short years, that PCC village has helped us put together a comprehensive program of services for our veterans and has, and has made our program become not only a model program for the state, but also for the nation. And some of the standouts that I would want you to look at, since the audience can't, may not be able to see all of it, is that we have a 10-station computer lab with assistive technology, technology software. We have a 50% veterans coordinator. We have a transition course, boots-to-books, veterans-only classes, a veterans cohort. We have a SmartPens STEM program, which I'll talk about later. We have USVets Psychological Services for combat vets. We also have the Salute, we're the only community college in the West currently that is part of the National Academic Honor Society for Veterans at Salute. And we also have a Veterans Club that's a chapter of the Student Veterans of America. Since it opened, the VRC has averaged 3,600 veterans contacts per semester and that's made up of drop-ins for computer use, studying, referrals, counseling appointments. And when you're looking at that number, keep in mind that we only have 10 computer stations and we only have about 800 square feet. So at times when we're fully packed, we can barely walk through the room and we are hoping for more space. Last year, we realized that with so many veterans coming back with adjustment issues, not just psychological or physical disabilities, but transitioning issues, that just handing out brochures or referral phone numbers wasn't working very well. And one of the reasons we found is that veterans don't like asking for help, so they don't always follow through, or they become very frustrated navigating the system. So we did something very different. We switched to a case management model. And that is what makes PCC's veteran services different and stand out among other colleges. So one of the key points to case management that we learned was that with a limited budget and resources, we needed to create the strongest group of partnerships we could, both within our campus and in the community. And case management is only as good as the referral systems that you have in place. So building that network of support and making those personal connections helps to increase the likelihood of success. So creating that caring approach and making attending PCC a welcoming process for our veterans. When a veteran comes into the VRC and is having problems, we make the referral and schedule an appointment with the student right there in the office. And then in about a week or two, we make sure that things are still on track and find out how it went and that there was follow-through. At the end of last year, we had assisted our veterans here at PCC in securing over $200,000 in various emergency funding, disability back pay, unemployment benefits, funding for gas cards, utility bills, funds for housing, and car repairs, and et cetera. So we also supported through psychological services, referrals, attempted suicides, and a few dozen more with hand-holding support and just cheering for their successes, or just giving them a safe space where they can just let off some steam. We also started the Veterans Learning Collaborative in fall 2011. It's a coordinated set of 12 units of GE classes. The courses introduce veterans to the rigors and challenges of academic life. It includes, as you can see, a transition course, boots-to-books, an introduction to college, English, anthropology, and a study skills. The faculty team members collaborate in their teaching to provide integrative learning. They worked together to make the classes meaningful, challenging, and relevant to the student veterans. The structure emphasizes faculty involvement and social connections among student veterans. As the result, participating student veterans have become more actively engaged in the college, they've developed connections with faculty members, and have formed strong bonds with each other. So why a cohort? Why did we decide that? Well, because of the changes in the GI Bill in 2010, veterans are no longer able to take less than 12 units to get their full benefits. And we were seeing a lot of newly discharged veterans that clearly were not ready for full-time classes. As you can see in the slide, more than half were discharged less than a year before attending PCC. So we created a learning community to help them transition more easily and geared towards veterans studying with other veterans. A couple of veterans in that first cohort were discharged on Saturday and started classes on Monday. Clearly, they were not fully prepared for that transition. Veterans are also accustomed to working as a team and this learning community is trying to recreate that team mentality. The Veterans Learning Collaborative classes integrate appropriate material that links the topics in each other's classes and it includes self-learning opportunities, service learning opportunities in an outdoor, out-of-class experience, it's a camping retreat. And it's modeled after the Math Path Camping Retreat and it's mandatory for students to attend. We also decided to include books, because the VA pays benefits 30 days in arrears and most veterans don't buy their books until they receive their benefits and then they get behind in their classes. The core synthesizing class in the program is our transition course, Boots-to-Books, which has been offering, we've been offering that since 2008. And as you know, the instructor, Harold Martin, is a combat vet who experienced firsthand the difficulties of transitioning when he went in two weeks from battlefield to college campus. So he can really relate to the veterans' experience when they get to PCC. We also offer Boots-to-Books as a standalone class in the spring, where it isn't linked to other classes, giving different veterans the opportunity to take that class. It focuses on the strengths of the veteran and integrates personal and professional growth while still developing career and educational goals and giving veterans college survival skills. The class also incorporates an outdoor learning experience that's not only a chance to enjoy camaraderie, but also becomes a safe confidential opportunity for veterans to come together and talk about the impact of their military experience and any other challenges that they may have in making that transition from military service. A sense of camaraderie and the commitment to leave no one behind that exists on the battlefield in the military is recreated again in this classroom. That cohort retreat is in our local mountains in Idlewild and it's designed to give an outdoor learning experience to reinforce the significance of mental, physical, and spiritual well-being and foster a better bonding experience. It includes that service learning component and has the student veterans working at a local animal rescue shelter as part of an anthropology assignment that deals with humans' relationship to animals. And as you know, some people who have experienced trauma sometimes have a hard time relating to other people, but they do well with animals. So it's a very positive experience and it's just a wonderful and memorable time for our veterans. So what, what kind of data do we have for this collaborative? Well, so far, the data that we've collected shows that we had a 92% retention rate and according to IPRO, for 2011 through 2012, the average retention for the entire college was 87%. 70%, 70% went on to college-level English compared to 61% to 67% for non-veteran students in the English 100 population. But we also had about half get a D or an F in at least one class. And this bothered me. So I wanted to look more closely at, for some explanations and, so we looked at some of the support services that we provided. And as you can see, these students also had a lot of challenges and came in for a lot of support services. The majority were for medical and psychological services. During the, during the fall of 2011, we had five student veterans report that they were contemplating suicide. Two of them were in that cohort. Three of them self-admitted themselves to the VA psychiatric ward and two, we referred to Soldier's Project psychologist. We are very, very sensitive to suicide prevention, because we had a suicide in 2010. Justin Morrow, I try and remember Justin every day. He was very well-liked by his professors. He came to see me several times. And that first week of May, when he came to see me, he was having some financial problems and he seemed a little depressed. I asked him what was wrong and he said he had problems with some money and he was also in the middle finals and I offered to refer him to a psychologist, but he didn't want to go. Later that week, he went to see the GI Bill certifying office and spoke with Terri Powell and she also tried to walk him over to psychological services and he didn't want to go. The news about Justin was quite devastating to us and to his professors and we also found out that Justin had a newborn son. We all saw some signs, but we really didn't know how troubled he was. We offered to help, but he wasn't interested. We may not have been able to do anything different, but we know that we want to continue to do as much as we can, so we never have to have to happen another of our students committing suicide. So we take mental health support very, very seriously and we feel that it's essential. This study that I have up here by the American Psychological Association last year found that the reported rate of suicide attempts among student veterans was six times higher than that of the general student population. Last year, more active-duty soldiers killed themselves than died in combat. 349 service members took their lives in 2012, while a lesser number, 295, died in combat. So what do we have in place so far here at PCC? The Veterans Resource Center has a memorandum of understanding with USVets for a program called Outside the Wire. The program is designed to address combat veterans' needs for preventative and early mental health treatment. And currently, we offer only one day a week. We would like to have more and we're working on it. Our own PCC Psychological Services is also very helpful, but many of our combat veterans generally want someone with more PTSD or post-traumatic stress training. But not all veterans are combat veterans, so some do utilize those services. Psychological services can sometimes have a three-week waiting list, so that makes it a little difficult. But they're wonderful to have on campus, especially, especially when we have an urgent issue and they're always available for an emergency drop-in. We also use Soldier's Project for off-campus referrals, as well as the VA Mental Health Services in West LA and Long Beach. And we also have the VA Vet Centers from East LA and Gardena come to the Veterans Resource Center here at PCC and do outreach three to four times a month. It is our number-one priority to increase on-campus psychological services for these veterans in distress. This semester, we started a new program with the Chancellor's Office and their DSPS High Tech Center for SmartPens and STEM classes. And the student veterans are working with PCC's STEM faculty to apply principles of universal design by using SmartPens and then pen-casting notes and class materials online. This innovative teaching technology is taking teaching to the next level through increased accessibility. These pens are amazing. They have these little cameras at the tip that photograph all of the notes that you're taking and then there's a recorder on the other end and it's picking up audio. Then the student veterans will upload all the notes and any other materials from the class. And this makes it available not only for disabled veterans, but also DSPF students and all students. So student veterans are acting as note-takers in the classroom and tech support for the STEM faculty. And this program will benefit veterans and all students in STEM classes as well. We currently have 17 pens, of which about half were donated to the VRC and we will be making some available for disabled veterans for use in any of their classes. Women veterans, we're also focused on women veterans. They tend to be the invisible veterans. Researchers have found that a substantial number of women join the military to escape abusive and violent home environments and to become independent. Women veterans also had higher risk for depression than men and in Iraq and Afghanistan, servicewomen liked their male counterparts served in combat support units. They performed unique functions such as searching women at checkpoints and accompanying combat units during house-to-house searches. We do outreach and try to assist them and educate them in their rights and benefits and provide them referrals to services relating to military sexual trauma and post-traumatic stress and traumatic brain injury. We're currently cosponsoring a Saturday workshop on March 23rd with the YWCA in Glendale. It's a military women's empowerment and wellness workshop and they're gonna be doing fatigues to fabulous, their wardrobes for the workplace, writing resumes, financial literacy and holistic self-care. And they'll also have free childcare, which is very essential for them. Tomorrow afternoon, we have an exclusive screening of a new documentary, Women of the Military and Creveling, and we'll have Stephanie Stone, the Deputy Secretary of the County Military and Veteran Affairs, as the moderator and a panel of PCC female veterans We are trying very hard to reach out to these invisible veterans, because they are at higher risk of falling through the cracks and especially becoming homeless. We have several that we've helped find permanent housing. While the military prepares to allow women to move into frontline combat roles, it's vital we remember women have been in the fight for years and many of them need significant help when they try to return to civilian life. The Veterans Resource Center also does community outreach and awareness programs. Through the last two Road Home symposiums, we had over 35 colleges attend. Our film screenings of veteran documentaries have had 200 or more students, staff, and community members attend each time. We've done workshops on staff development days and we also have, have done some in each of the academic departments. Dr. Byers also has the psych interns come to the VRC and we do an in-service for them on veterans' issues. We have lots of community partners, as you can see. But the best of all is the Promotions and Awards Dinner. Last year, we had over 58 veterans graduate and many more transferred. We also had 23 apply and get inducted into Salute, the National Academic Honor Society for Veterans. They transferred to UCLA, Berkeley, LMU, USC, UC Santa Barbara, many of the Cal States, and even to Columbia University. And now I'm gonna give it over to A.J. Glasgow, who is the president of our Veterans Club.
Good evening, President Martin, President Rocha, and members of the Board of Trustees. Thank you for the opportunity to express our gratitude for your support. We have a short video from our fellow student, Natalie Weber, put together for us.
You've made two wonderful decisions with your lives. Both decisions that you didn't have to make. One, you made the decision to serve your country. That makes you very, very special, men and women. The other decision that you've made clearly here today is that you've decided to come to Pasadena City College.
Ritual, recognition, and rites of passage have always been cherished in societies and they should be bestowed more plentifully because in reality, there truly are many deserving of commendation. Service, academics, leadership, unity, tribute, and excellence. These create the foundation of our honor society.
I am a nursing major. My name is Chuck Farrell. I'm a PCC student. My primary job, I was a combat medic. I worked in a combat support hospital when we weren't on missions and I would go out on missions and do medical support. The thing about combat, like when you actually get into combat, it's confusing, it's frustrating, It's hard to be sure about anything in combat. Every time you work on a patient, you generate what's called a casualty care report or a casualty care ticket. And I generated over 1,000 in Afghanistan. I've seen more people die, either dead or die in front of me because I couldn't fix them than I can count.
August 21st, 2004, I was on our routine patrol outside Fallujah, Iraq, in a little town called Sakawia. Went down the street with me and my friend Lance Corporal Houston. And my squad leader went first. He went over the bomb first, then nothing happened. And I was standing about four feet away from it when it went off. My friend was right on top of it and he got blown to pieces. And somehow, which is just a miracle by God, I only got my right arm trapped and it would go through my shoulder. I don't have a shoulder. I trapped and it would go through here. And I lost vision on my right eye, but at the time, I also lost vision on my left eye.
I came home, I was looking around for schools, and Pasadena had a really good reputation among colleges that had an associate's degree or associate's nursing program. Somebody told me to come to Pasadena and talk to the counselors here because they have a vet program or they have a vet center. And I wasn't even told to come to the school. I was just told to come to the vet center to talk to them and they would help me even if I wasn't a student, which I thought was generous. And so I did and I liked what was here and so I enrolled here.
When I got out of the military, I was lost. And the Veterans Resource Center helped me and as well as Veterans Club, helped me along the way, helped guide me and helped put me in a position, in a winning position.
Actually, I was standing in the quad one day. I was waiting on a class and I think I had on a Marine Corps t-shirt. And a veteran walked up to me, a lively veteran. And he kind of, "Hey, you know, how long have you been going here? Have you been to the VRC? Have you come to the Veterans Club? Do this, do that." And I liked him, so I started kind of following around. He showed me around. I think I'd been to two buildings on campus and the parking lot in the whole time I'd been here. And he showed me around, introduced me to people who are now some of my best friends, just started pulling me out of my shell, but giving me, introducing me into the community that's really supportive and, you know, people here like veterans that understand exactly what I feel, when I feel it.
And I remember I just wrote an essay on this for my scholarship and I wrote the first word I could, if I could describe the feeling I felt in one word, I would say it was compassion. What Carol and Patty had for me, took me and made me feel welcomed.
She explained the whole process of what classes I would need, why I would need them, a good strategy for what to take when. So all of my prerequisites will be done on time because she not only explained why I needed the classes, but how they fit in with each other.
She was just so energetic and like ready to help me. And she made out my whole ed plan and sent me, I would take my placement exam. And she just was like asking me, did I have a place to stay? And did I know about all the different things that they have in the area just for veterans?
She presents many different programs, opportunities that us veterans probably don't even know about that we can refer to, to help us out in whatever hardship situation that we may be enduring at the time. Whether it's housing issues, whether a veteran is having problems finding, even finding a meal. When I first came to Pasadena, I came from San Diego. I had nothing, but my clothes in my car. I was living out in my car for, you know, about a couple of weeks, but she helped me with my housing situation.
Veterans Resource Center, to me, is just like this little safe haven. Veterans can go and just kind of hang out, just sit, eat, chat, do homework. And there's a lot of tutoring services in there.
It's helpful for tutoring, studying, and peace, hanging out with people that have more in common with you than the average student. Sometimes you want to talk about things that happen on active duty, but you really can't talk about it with somebody that's never been there because they wouldn't understand. So it's kind of like a comfort and like it helps you cope with a lot of different stuff.
On a personal level, the biggest benefit that I've received from, biggest single benefit that I've received from the vet center here has been the Counseling 12 class. A class specifically designed for reintegration and specifically designed to get you to think about your deployment experiences and the unique challenges that veteran students kind of face in going back to school after so many years.
Boots to Books is a class that takes you from being a highly-trained, skilled military service member to being a highly-trained, skilled college student. Dr. Martin likes to take the approach in the beginning as if you're, not so much as if you're just starting off in college and having to pick up all these skills, but he likes to take the approach that you already have these skills, you just don't know how to use them yet. The first advantage of having the Veterans Club is that our mission is to help other veterans, to seek out, the way I was sought out, to seek out other veterans who may be wandering around and let them know there are actually people here just like you that you can spend time with, you can ask questions. If you have a problem, the chances are, we've had that problem and we're still here. So we know exactly what you need to do.
If a veteran doesn't have a friend or anyone to go to, then we're that friend. We can, we provide that social support.
The first semester back was weird and intimidating. I didn't know how to approach teachers. I didn't know how to interact with other students. The vet center was the only place I could have what felt like a normal conversation with anybody. And that was really helpful. And I spent a lot of my time in the vet center just because it feels like I'm back with a unit. And even working with people from other branches, Navy, Marines, Air Force. We had a Coast Guardsman here for a while. But there's a bond of service that all of us kind of share and can relate to without even talking about it.
We carry on the act of no man left behind. The same mentality that we've all shared in the military, that there's no person left behind. And, you know, we carry that throughout life, not just here at PCC, not just here in the Veterans Resource Center, but throughout life.[1162.33][1162.33][applause]
So first, I would like to ask all members of the Veterans Resource Center that are here if you would stand so we can recognize all of you that are here and with them. All of you stand up. And second, if we could just get all the veterans in the room to stand. Jeff? Wow. Don't go anywhere. Trustee Brown, I see your light on. While President Rocha and I are walking up to Professor George Martin, do you want to make a comment, please?
Sir, first off, amazing work. Patty, you know that we're known up and down the state for our leadership in Veterans Affairs and we've gotten, thanks to PCC and other places, one big achievement that we can point to is that we have arranged through legislation that veterans have first priority in registration for classes when they enroll in any community college in California. But there are two other things that we all need to work together on that will help veterans. We saw the piece where Chuck Farrell, is Chuck here?
No, he's not. He's at a class.
But Chuck has so much experience as an Army medic, he shouldn't have to start from scratch with classes in allied health professions when he has all this experience in the field. And we're working to make sure that students like Chuck will get credit on their transcripts so that they can progress more swiftly toward their degree or diploma for their work that they got in allied health or other career technical skills that they acquired in the military. But that's going to take some lobbying and continuing work within the state and within the DoD and other places. The other thing that we're trying to do, which we need help for, is that if a soldier gets deployed to California, gets discharged, and they haven't had a chance to establish residency, right now, they'd be subject to out-of-state tuition if they're not a California resident. We want to waive that so any veteran who is deployed can enroll within state tuition. And so I call on the veterans to continue to make their voices heard so that we can make the progress on finding other ways to make it better for veterans and honor the service that they give in our country.
Thank you very much. That is very helpful. That will be very helpful for veterans. I think that the health issue, the giving them credit, giving them some kind of priority in the nursing programs is really essential, not only for people like Chuck, but we also have David Old here, who has the Bronze Star and was a medic. And, you know, he gets no, they get no credit whatsoever, not any kind of priority in any of the nursing programs. So that will be very, very helpful for them.
And lastly, this is like the one of the programs at PCC I hear about in the community. I'm involved with Locking Out a Presbyterian Church and our council member, Steve Madison. I don't know if Ert is here. She's meeting with our council member tomorrow to lobby from the community on behalf of the Veterans Program and what we can do more. So, great job. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I just wanted to give you my personal thanks, Mr. Orange Martin, because, you know, it's clear how passionate you are for the work that you do and it's clear how much you're loved by the veterans and by all on this campus. But it strikes a personal note for me because one of my former staff is a veteran here at PCC and she told me how much she just felt the camaraderie when she entered the Veterans Center and found out that a number of other vets who served under her in her platoon were also here. And she just really felt that this was family and it was home. So thank you so much for what you do.
Thank you. Thank you.
A last business question so that you can help us build the budget for next year. Right? So 707 veterans in our Veterans Center. With the stand-down and the deployments in Afghanistan and so on, do you have an estimate about how many new veterans will be coming to PCC in the next year or so?
If I just look at the numbers and just sort of guesstimate, I would say that we're probably getting right now 30 to 40, and I think that will probably double each semester. And who knows, even more. It'll just depend on how quickly the stand-down happens.
Okay. Thanks.
Well, Professor George Martin, it's my privilege. We have a special recognition for you. And it says, I'm not going to read the whole thing, but it says, Pasadena Area Community College District Board of Trustees, Special Recognition. It lists some of the things you've done, Women of the Year, et cetera, et cetera. And then there's a mistake. It says, because she has made a significant contribution to the field of education, colleges, and community for veterans issues. And we realize significant is a mistake. It totally underscores the amount of effort and work and commitment that you have put in. We have a tremendous Veterans Center. We have a lot of resources going to veterans. We have a lot of things. We have one thing no other community college has. We have you! And we know that![1532.26][1532.26][applause] Behind it all, there's a lot of great people, but there's a lot of great coordination, love, and passion that understands them like you do. And so I am thrilled to present you with this recognition on behalf of the Board of Trustees with all of ours and all of ours sincerest thank you. I felt like giving you a big hug, but I don't know if I can do that in a public meeting. Fantastic. Okay, we are at public comment and thank you, guys and gals and ladies and men and women here in the front. And you're sure welcome to stay for the rest of this and we certainly understand if you have other things, too. We are at public comment and I asked some of my colleagues here to help me with names. We're going to try to read off a couple of names in advance so that maybe we can line this up. We have rules for this. They say 30 minutes. I don't think that's going to quite work. We want to hear from you, obviously. Do ask that, you know, the more you can make it succinct, so we're not here three hours or something, that means the people that, at the end of the line, will also get to be heard and get their, you know, everybody's full attention and stuff, right? So we'll all work together on this. And so, Trustee Brown, are you doing the honors on the names? If you'll read a couple ahead and every time, just keep us one more in the queue.
How much time do each speaker have?
Three minutes, isn't it?
Well, I'd like you to do it in three, if you could. Would you do that, try? Okay? Work here together because we've got, I don't know. How many?
Twenty.
Okay. So that, we should get that. I think we'll work together on this, right? Okay, so who's up?
We will begin with Pat Rose, to be followed by Karen Carlisi.[1666.54][1666.54][applause]
Well, good evening. I am Pat Rose of the English Division. President Martin, Board of Trustees, President Rocha, and members of the PCC community and all you fabulous vets. I just want to add, my son was a vet and Iraq veteran, came to PCC, got out of here in two years, and just graduated from Berkeley. All right? We are some of the members of the Ad Hoc Faculty Committee. We have come here tonight to report to you the results of a vote of no confidence in President Rocha by full-time faculty members. The results of this ballot were conscientiously tallied last Tuesday by an independent vote counter. It is important that the Board of Trustees and the community know that faculty had one week to post their ballots, ballots which had been distributed to them by the Ad Hoc Faculty Committee, which was anonymous at the time. Nonetheless, 213 out of 363 active, full-time PCC faculty voted overwhelmingly to support a vote of no confidence in President Rocha.[1761.01][1761.01][applause] Of 204 valid ballots, only 16 faculty were opposed, while 188 full-time faculty or 92% voted in support of the no-confidence proposition. These members mean that more than half of the total active, full-time faculty members at PCC believe that President Rocha has failed to perform his job as superintendent-president. What does this result mean? Does this vote... Does this vote have any real significance? What right do we, the faculty, have to evaluate President Rocha's leadership and performance? And why have we come here tonight to present the faculty vote of no confidence to the Board of Trustees and to the community? First of all, this vote of no confidence exposes a serious crisis of leadership at PCC. Three and one-half pages of supporting documentation accompanied these ballots, which detailed 10 major areas of complaints and more than 20 specific examples of violations of trust, collegiality, procedure, and sound reason practiced by this administration. And we invite the Board of Trustees and the community to read this material. This vote, based on that documentation, underscores the fact that 92% of full-time voting faculty agree, amongst other things, that President Rocha has impeded student success, violated student and faculty trust, and in general brought about destructive, rather than constructive, changes at the college, while conscientiously ignoring the concerns of students, staff, and faculty members at Pasadena City College.
I'm Karen Carleese, full-time faculty in Languages and English. What is the significance of this vote? The vote of no confidence highlights, in neon lights, the fact that trust has completely broken down between PCC faculty and the administration. At Pasadena City College, hard-working faculty members, staff, and students are fighting for a healthy institution centered around mutual respect, shared decision-making, and a genuine concern for student achievement, student progress, and academic programs. Today at PCC, we have a superintendent-president and an administration whose style of leadership ignores the very principles of reason, judgment, respectful collaboration, and shared values that further a healthy, productive community college. The vote of no confidence exposes the deep fissures in the foundation of PCC which have been caused by President Rocha and his administration. What right does the faculty have to evaluate President Rocha's leadership and performance? Our right to conduct an administrator's review is a crucial component in the overall health of our college. In an unprecedented move, two weeks before canceling winter 2013 intercession, the PCC Board of Trustees removed faculty, staff, and students from the presidential review process as per Board Policy Number 1680. Therefore, neither faculty nor staff nor students have been included to date in President Mark Rocha's evaluation. However, as the American Association of University Professors' policy states, faculty members are duly constituted officers of the college who have a right, which has been denied us under President Rocha's tenure, to evaluate the performance of our president. The Board's new policy states that only after the fourth year of employment will the campus be included in the president's evaluation. Even then, an outside evaluator will be chosen by the president himself, along with the board, and any evaluations made by faculty, staff, and students won't be considered if anonymous.
Jill O'Hora, English Division. The accumulated wreckage of bad decision-making at this college has to be recognized and stopped now. If we follow the path of only one bad decision made by President Rocha, his administration, and this board, it is easy to illustrate this path of destruction. In canceling winter 2013 intercession, President Rocha, his administration, and the board irresponsibly dismissed almost one year of informed discussion and debate by the calendar committee. Moreover, entire academic programs were dismissed. Faculty were stripped of up to 10% of their annual pay and up to 30% for part-timers. Student attendance has fallen below state requirements, endangering our Prop 30 monies. And most importantly, students lost essential classes necessary for transfer. All of this and repercussions yet to occur in the wake of one terrible decision. As the overwhelming results of the vote of no confidence indicate, a serious, debilitating crisis of leadership is crippling our college. We faculty feel that we have a pressing obligation to communicate the dire nature of this leadership crisis to the Pasadena City College Board of Trustees and to the community at large. We implore the Board of Trustees to stop ignoring the voices of the faculty members, staff, and students, and to recognize that an emergency exists here at Pasadena City College. It could take years to recover from the damage done to PCC. Do you, the Board of Trustees, really want this kind of destructive legacy on your hands? Can you really afford to ignore the voices of both the students and 90% of the faculty voting, a position of no confidence in President Rocha? We expect that you will listen to and act upon this crisis of leadership so that PCC can start moving forward. Thank you very much.
Lana Fields, to be followed by John Fraser. Is Lana Fields here?
Yes, I'm so sorry. Thank you. My name is Lana Fields, and unfortunately, I am a casualty of some of the leadership problems that we're having at PCC. I began, I'm actually a former faculty member from Pasadena City College. And my almost 24-year career at Pasadena City College ended in December of last year. Let me begin by stating that I dedicated my entire career to Pasadena City College, to student success, and to the pursuit of academic excellence. I began my career at PCC in 1988 as a student worker in the president's office, working for Jack Scott. After transferring to USC and completing my bachelor's degree, I returned to PCC in '93. And since that time, I've been an exceptional employee, moving my way up the ranks, leaving each job better than it was when I arrived on the job. In addition, I continued my own education by obtaining my master's degree. And I'll be defending my dissertation this year, resulting in a doctorate in educational leadership. The last position I held at Pasadena City College was a faculty position as the CalWorks Coordinator. I maintained this position from 2001 until December 8, 2012. During the time I coordinated the CalWorks program, I built it into a model program, recognized by the California Community College Chancellor's Office for six consecutive years. PCC's CalWorks program model was used to train other colleges throughout the state and utilizing our best practices that I refined and implemented at PCC. On behalf of the Chancellor's Office, I presented the best practices of PCC's CalWorks program at the annual CalWorks Conference countless times. And I also sat as an expert on best practices in many panel discussions. I also represented PCC at the Chancellor's Office in Sacramento in several capacities. I participated in the Chancellor's Budget Allocation Committee, responsible for developing and implementing strategies to fund the CalWorks programs statewide. At the Chancellor's request, I also represented PCC throughout the state by traveling to other colleges and evaluating their CalWorks programs and making recommendations for corrective action and program improvement. Furthermore, I co-chaired the CalWorks State Advisory Committee on behalf of the Chancellor as well. My peers and colleagues elected me to represent the 14 colleges from Region 7 in Sacramento. Likewise, I served as a board member for the Los Angeles, California Community College CalWorks Consortium, representing 22 colleges in the southern regions of the state as well. I served on numerous advisory committees, accreditation teams, planning teams, planning committees, staff development committees, always representing PCC and myself in the best positive light. In addition, PCC also entrusted me as the site supervisor of their multimillion-dollar Community Education Center in the evenings and on the weekends for seven years. In September... Excuse me. In September 2010, I was diagnosed with advanced stages of breast cancer. In October 2010, I went on catastrophic leave. After 16 months of chemo and radiation and surgery, I returned to work in January 2012, and I endured five more months of chemo while working full-time and completing my treatments in May of 2012. In July of 2012, I was put on paid administrative leave pending an investigation of actions taken by an employee who worked in my department. The employee subsequently admitted his misconduct in August of last year and was allowed to resign from the college. The employee in question lied, claiming that I was involved in the misconduct as well. The employee's misconduct was made without my knowledge, without my blessing, without my participation. I've never had a negative finding or an audit exception. I've never had a negative performance evaluation. I've never had a memo of concern in my file. I've never had a reprimand. I've been nothing but an exceptional employee. And as the result of a lie, after nearly 23 years of outstanding service to PCC, I was unjustly terminated in December with the claim that it's more likely than not that I was involved, that I am therefore untrustworthy, unethical, and unfit for service. I dedicated my entire life to PCC, and I served PCC well. And the thanks that I got in return is saddening and outrageous. I've been treated like a criminal, and it's humiliating. The entire process has been demeaning and detrimental to my health and my well-being. I'm absolutely stunned that after two over-two decades of dedicated service, I wasn't even given the common decency of being considered innocent until proven guilty. I was assumed guilty from day one and have been treated less than human. This is a horrible, horrible ending to a longstanding, exceptional career at an institution that I dedicated my life to and that I used to be proud to call my home. Thank you.
John Fraser. And Kevin will follow.
Hello, good evening.
Kevin Clinton, please be ready to go.
I'm sorry?
Kevin Clinton, please be ready to follow John.
Okay, good evening, President of the Board, everyone on the large panel of the Board of Trustees. I come here tonight, unfortunately, I have missed the majority of what has transpired before this, simply because the room capacity in its current setup is at 155. And I would like to just let you know that now, I believe, every student that has waited outside has now entered the room, so that's a good note to begin with. Unfortunately, tonight, the news of the associated students is not going to be all that pleasant. So, I guess I'd like to start today with, since the vote of no confidence, which will most likely be discussed at greater length later on in tonight's meeting. In between the vote of no confidence and now, there are two further documented Title V violations that the associated students would like to bring to the attention of the Board of Trustees. Unfortunately, both of these have been brought to the attention of the administration, and neither of which has been addressed quite yet. So, the issues continue to be prevalent, and I'm willing to talk to anyone about this. I'll most likely be sending the Board of Trustees an email tonight to clarify the details. However, there is a consistent issue with the associated students' conception at the shared governance table. The purpose in a representative democracy is for the representative to be speaking with the voice of the many that cannot be there. So, when the associated student sits through a five-hour meeting, there aren't a whole lot of people that would like to sit through a five-hour meeting. As much fun as I have at them, most people do not. That is the reason why the associated student comes here today in order to appeal, to try to get the Board of Trustees to consider the reports of the AS. And unfortunately, a lot of these things have been lost in the process. There's a process of filtering in the decision-making process of shared governance, where the shared governance committee may make a decision, and then it is reported to the administration and is not reported to the Board of Trustees. And unfortunately, the several concerns the Board of Trustees did bring forward about the cancellation of winter, which I'm sure you have all heard about, are, quite frankly, to me, just as concerning as they should be. The Board of Trustees had very legitimate concerns with voting no, just then and there. However, these concerns had answers as well. And unfortunately, the associated students were unable to respond to a lot of the discussion that happened, despite having answers prepared for the specific points brought up by administration during that meeting. So, I just wanted to comment on the ability of the Board of Trustees to call on members of the public after the period of time has passed for public comment to have expired. If someone has necessary information that might help the health of this college and would be able to contribute that information and experience, I would just highly encourage the Board President to exercise his discretion in addressing members of the audience who might have this kind of pertinent information. And I just want to say that, finally, a lot of the decisions that have taken place, which the associated students greatly disagree about, and I don't believe have had positive consequences at all, were preventable at this point. And, quite frankly, the processes through which they're regularly bound to follow have been subverted, and it's been detrimental. I think we've conveyed that point to the extent where you all understand this. However, the reason for the shared governance process is not to just slow things down. It's to try to come forward with answers. And I understand that the shared governance process can at times be very slow. I've sat through shared governance meetings. I understand.
You have 30 seconds.
Thank you. With that, I just would like to say, the reason why we have it is so that every voice is able to be heard so that the students don't end up not being able to transfer when there's information that says they won't be able to transfer available. And unfortunately, this was conveyed. I had a five-page document, which I sent to all of the members of the Board of Trustees with this specific concern. And unfortunately, it was not necessarily addressed. I feel like it was muted. It was just muddled by the sounds of, "This is too soon." And a lot of the time, the voice of reason at the table is neglected because they are associated with a collective with which they have not voluntarily associated themselves with. So, I wanted to bring this to your attention, and I hope you have a good rest of your meeting.
As they read off the names, if you're the next second or third one up, if you could kind of come up and just politely stand behind the speaker so we can... I'm just pulling back my comment.
Okay, great. So, Jordan Roscoe and Eduardo Cairo. Please line up.
Eduardo, if you would just get ready, please.
Point of order. I have a list of the submissions of requests to speak here, initial by your security officer here. And you are not going on the basis of the list. Would you please follow the list as given?
And then, if the next speaker would get ready, please, that she called off. If the next speaker would get ready, please.
Hello, trustees. Thank you for taking the time to hear my public comment. My name is Jordan Roscoe, and I am the Vice President for Cultural Diversity of Associated Students. And I'm here today to share my thoughts and to give advice to you, to people who may have not had the same opportunities or experiences as I have. I want to start with my childhood. I heard a story about three people a young girl meets in a land not very far from this one. These three individuals, all looking for a missing part of themselves. The scarecrow, who is looking for a brain; the lion, looking for his courage; and the tin woodman, looking for my favorite, his heart. Ironically, together, they make up the quintessential values the human spirit encompasses. The reason for mentioning these fine folk are to simply make a correlation to the college at this moment. These three essential human characteristics are not present on our campus today. Our spirit is broken as a college, and it is due to the lack of heart, mind, and courage that this administration has shown within the past year. Let's take, for example, the calendar change and the incident that happened a week before spring break with Mr. James Dean. The change was made without proper critical thinking skills and was made without proper knowledge of what consequences would entail. The subject of Mr. James Dean's public event being canceled was one I heard about two days before the event. The reasons for the cancellation were appalling, let alone pathetic, in comparison to what really transpired at the event. We can allow bigots on campus that say, "I'm going to hell because I'm gay," or allow people on campus that say that getting an abortion is wrong and post building high pictures of aborted fetuses, yet we can allow someone on campus who would give a sex-positive talk that would benefit students? To me, this sounds like a personal problem within the administration and as well as a misplacement of priorities amongst our college. I thought we were student-centered on transferring and getting our students out of here. Seems to me we would rather concern ourselves with a gentleman's career choice rather than our students. Lastly, I would like to bring up the topic of the heart, the most important organ in the body. Without it, the body stops to function. But I'm not talking anatomy here. I'm talking about the heart that tells us whether a decision is right or wrong. I'm talking about the heart that tells us whether a decision is right or wrong. The heart that leads us to make good decisions, that leads to progression, to the progression of our society. There is no heart on this campus. People who are more focused on their career and position versus student need is all I see across the campus, and it breaks my heart. People who would rather make executive decisions they should not make, decisions they have no right to unilaterally make. Interest in self is essential, but only in moderation. When it overpowers the need of others, it becomes a tool of corruption. On this campus, I've seen individuals serve the administration's needs and completely disregard student needs. I chose to vote no confidence in President Rocha and to center administration because I feel that the brain...
30 seconds.
I feel that the brain, the courage, and the heart of this body is missing. I don't feel confident that this administration and the position that it is in can continue to work for students when it can't even work for itself. We have already disadvantaged enough, we are already disadvantaged enough that we don't need to be hindered, hindering the leaders of tomorrow. So I end with this. I hope we can work together on coming to a consensus and helping the student population at large. I look forward to meeting with each individual one of you and discussing what we can do to help heal the campus as a whole. Thank you.
Just a minute, sir. The other two will be Alex Collegian, you will be followed, and then Simon Fraser.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I'm here to speak to you regarding the letter that the President of the Board of Trustees, John Moran, wrote to Christine Michaels of The Courier in regards to the Superintendent President Rocha's evaluation. Quite frankly, after I read it, I was dumbfounded by the evaluation itself. Let me read to you a couple of the, a quote. During this evaluation process, the Board carefully reviewed Dr. Rocha's performance on the administration's progress to achieve our numerous college goals, which primarily focus on student success. The full, the full Board also spent a great deal of time deliberating as a Board during this process. Dr. Rocha overwhelmingly received a positive evaluation. In fact, he received one of the highest evaluations that I have seen on my tenure on the Board. With all due respect, sir, I don't see how the Board and yourself were able to come to this understanding. It is as if you and I, the Board, operate in two different worlds in regards to this campus. Let me provide you with a different set of information in regards to what has occurred on this campus during his tenure as well as yours. So far, as far as, as far as I can see, this is not limited to, there is an issue of embezzlement, there are two non-issue lawsuits, there is the retiree issue, there is the inability to obtain a contract with faculty and classified, there is an unfair practice charge, FTE shortage due to administrations and Boards' actions, an Associated Students' vote of no confidence, an academic survey regarding the process by which the decision on the calendar was made, the results in which 76% of those participating opposed the process. The President of the Academic Senate, Dustin Hanvey, provided the Board with the results and these comments. Apparently, you have not read them. Additionally, as I saw in today's agenda, there is administrative claim for discrimination. In addition to this, the letter also states, in a different matter, that the Board has recently received a report from the Assistant Superintendent, Dr. Robert Bell, on the many efforts PCC is taking to ensure that students will receive transfer credit for classes taken in spring and summer. Before this meeting began, I heard various students complain that, from the Associated Student body, that those students are entering the summer is as, entering Cal States and UC, it is as a result of their efforts, not the schools.
You have 30 seconds. 30 seconds.
Yes, sir. I can only conclude that there exists a tremendous disconnect with the Board in regards to the daily ongoings of this college. And as such, I will be making for a formal request of the Board to place on the Board's next agenda an atomization of all the Superintendent Rocha's positive achievements, which would warrant such glowing comments. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Alexander Collegian, and I'm a candidate for the Pasadena City College Board of Trustees for Area 1. Area 1 includes the city of Lockenada, Flintridge, the western neighborhoods of San Rafael and Lindavista in Pasadena, and the western portion of Altadena. And I'm proud to announce, one of the first people to endorse my candidacy is the former Governor of the State of California, George Duke Major. In addition to Governor Duke Major, I've secured all five members of the Lockenada Unified School District Board of Education and many more following. The purpose of me running is because I saw something like this happen to the Lockenada Unified School District Board, back when I was on it as a student Board member. And there was a deep division between the Board, and the Teachers Union, and the students, and everyone in the community. And it took a three-term incumbent to lose her seat in order for something to be done. Right now, I believe that everybody's trying to do what is best for this college, but is doing it the wrong way. I want to strengthen the ties between everybody in this campus, whether you're a student, whether you're not a student, whether you're a member in the district, whether you're a parent that doesn't have a student in this district, or whether you're a parent that does have a student in this district, whether you're a teacher, whether you're an administrator, whether you're a Board member. This college is right, is a good college, but I want to make this college better. You know, when you're a Boy Scout and you go to a camp, you're told, "Leave the campsite better than you found it." I want to come and leave this place better than I found it. I've been involved in politics for a very long time, and I could tell you now, when someone gets desperate, or when you see desperate actions being taken, garbage is thrown. I want to get past the negativity. I want to build bridges. I want to put enemies aside and make them friends and work together as a community. This is a community college. We are not acting like a community college. Fingers should not be pointed. Instead, we should just sit down, work together, because there's so much that needs to be done, and we can achieve so much. Thank you very much, and I hope I have your support. Join me and join Governor Duke Major. Thank you.
Simon Fraser. To be, to be followed by Diego Chavez, and then Jane Hellinger. Please line up.
Good evening, members of the Board. President Martin, and I want to very quickly take a moment to say that our Veterans Resource Center and our Veterans Club do a fantastic effort, and I want to salute them here for the efforts that they do, and I want to join with the campus community in doing so. When I first arrived here at a Board of Trustees meeting two years ago, I was just a lone student shaking in my boots, very nervous, because it's a little bit intimidating, I'll be honest, and this, they weren't as fancy back then as they are now. But now, I'm here, and my name is Simon Fraser, and I am the President of the Associated Students of Pasadena City College. It is my burden to represent the viewpoints and opinions of 20, of around about 26,000 students. But I want to be clear that these are not merely students, and we talk about students in numbers a lot, whether there are this many students in a cohort, there are this many students in a pathway, this many in, in school, outside, outside of the district, wherever they're from. But these are 26,000 people with needs, with lives, and with plans that their attendance at this college seeks to further. These are people who came out in droves to register and vote for Proposition 30. These are people who are now paying attention not to national politics, but to state and local politics as well, as we've shown recently with the marvelous turnout we had for March in March. And the Associated Students takes its role at Pasadena City College very seriously and with great care. Our actions are carefully considered, our positions are well-vetted through our Executive Board, and it is my duty to report that the Associated Students, with that care and consideration, with 14 hours of in-meeting debate time alone, passed two resolutions: a resolution to censor Pasadena City College administration with regards to the academic calendar change of August the 29th, and a resolution of no confidence in Pasadena City College administration. Let me be clear. This is not a position that I or the Associated Students wanted in any way to be in, and in fact, I believe that the Associated Students did its utmost to sit at the table, to avoid being in an adversarial position. We told the Board of Trustees of our deep concern for transfer students during the Board meetings of August the 15th and the 29th, and implored for some more time to conduct a larger campus-wide dialogue through the shared governance process, which was the subject of my initial public comment at this Board. On the advice of Dr. Rocha and the administration, the Board voted against our recommendation, which is its right. However, the problems that we are now facing with transfer students, which are outlined in our resolutions and various memorandums and press releases, could have been avoided if we had taken our time to make any calendar change properly, whether or not the Associated Students was opposed to it.
30 seconds.
As it stands, our warning on the ill effects of the calendar change have become prophetic. In closing, since it seems that there's a shorter time limit right now, the Associated Students takes its shared governance responsibilities very seriously. Our Title V responsibilities, and I would point everyone to the opinion of the Chancellor's Office, 9720, which indicates how the, the role of the Associated Students should be balanced in weight of the district's own ability to authorize action and the ability of the Academic Senate to be relied primarily upon. The Associated Students does have recourse for Title V violations. We do have an ability, which I was not aware of, to ensure that our title rights, responsibility, our Title V rights are guaranteed. I hope that I do not have to use them. My request is that the Board of Trustees seriously consider restoring the shared governance process that has not been used. The calendar is merely a prime example. There are more, and I am happy to meet with every single one of you to discuss this. I'm sorry, I am very cut short. Yeah, I guess I'll leave it there, but essentially, the resolutions are available on our website, as.pasadena.edu, and I look forward to working with the Board to move forward.
Diego Chavez.
Diego, are you here, Diego?
Hellinger, she's standing.
My name's Diego Chavez, and I just want to share my experience with you guys. I am an AB 540 student, and I, I'm proud to say that I am finally transferring out this next semester. After three long years trying to find out what I want to do, trying to find out resources, how to pay for school, and ultimately finding a safe zone for, for me, and trying to establish a safe zone for other peers that find themselves in the same position, I was able to collaborate with my, my club members, United Without Boundaries, and our fight is not over, but I do want to say that when I started PCC, it, it, I, I came here not knowing about the, I would say, the prestige and the, the name it had amongst other community colleges. I'm not sure if we are ranked number one still in California, but I just want to let you guys know that whatever is happening, your, your decisions are affecting not only my life, but those 26,000 other students in this community college. I just want to let you know that you guys can fix this. And it's kind of sad to see you guys divided, you guys divided against the staff and the students, because this is an institution for higher education, and the only thing that we're supposed to do is promote higher education, and that's the one thing that we are failing to do. I just want to leave and see PCC as good as, as I once saw it. Thank you.
Matt Haynes will follow, and then Maria Rodriguez. Go ahead. Jane, you're on.
We're, we're queuing up who's after you. Okay, yes, I should have remembered. First of all, I want to thank Patty for being here and for all the vets for being here. They have meant so much in my classes, and I particularly think it's wonderful for Patty to do the tribute to Justin Murrow. There are several in the audience whose student he was when we lost him, and it's still a very painful thing today, and we'll do anything we can to help the vets. The question of shared governance is still serious at Pasadena City College. That's why I'm here to address it again after more than a year, because a good many people at the college have evidenced dissatisfaction with the process. But this problem, the process, is not the fault of faculty and students, as we have asked again and again for cooperative input on issues. Now, I'm going to read to you out of our website, that the shared governance says, "Ensure faculty, staff, and students have the opportunity to express their opinions at the campus level, and to ensure that these opinions are given every reasonable consideration and the right to participate effectively in the district and college governance, and the right of academic senators to assume primary responsibility for making recommendations in the area of curriculum and academic standards." That is on our website. Also, the League has said that it's very important to consider this as a process where we consult collegially, and also that it gives everyone the opportunity for effective participation. And of course, you know, that's one of the issues today. Now, you will say, okay, why, why do I have such a, a strong feeling about this? Well, because, in the historical sense, I was there. In Sacramento, at the time that Vasconcellos was working on the bill, I was a member of the Faculty Association of California Community Colleges, and we met with him a number of times. The basic motivation for this legislation was to bring the faculty and students to more closely alignment with the decision-making process in community colleges. This does not mean control, but it does mean participation. The bill was passed in 1990, and I was the president of fact in '91, '92, and '93, when the bill was being implemented. I was also the president of the Californians one year during this time, and I was also a part of the four-person committee that developed the guidelines for the Consultation Council in the Chancellor's Office. The dream for participatory governance in the community colleges was for us as important as Governor Brown's 1960 design for higher education. That also included the community college system.
30 seconds.
Okay. Well, I will just say quickly that shared governance does not usurp the Board's role and its decision-making role, nor does it strangle the role of the President. But when neither the President nor the Board seem to listen to the voices from the campus and do not seem to balance the committees and give more open opportunity for voices that want to share concerns, then what Vasconcellos envisioned for us has, at this college, been trampled by those who favor power over participation.
I teach in the math department, and I'm a member of the Calendar Standing Committee. And last year, the Calendar Standing Committee submitted to the Board of Trustees a calendar that had been approved by the Academic Senate, the College Council, and the PCC Faculty Association. The Board approved this calendar, and it was sent to the Chancellor's Office. In August, after this calendar was in place and in use, the Board imposed its own calendar without consultation of any shared governance committee in violation of AB 1725. Since that time, the college, in particular its students, have been in scheduling turmoil. Dr. Bell canceled our February meeting abruptly without consultation or consent from the co-chair, Krista Walter, and without explanation. When Dr. Walter met with Dr. Bell, he indicated that he canceled the meeting because we were unable to complete the urgent task of approving the Board's 1314 calendar due to the number of concerned public comments regarding the pedagogical and practical merits of Winter and the blatant violation of shared governance. In other words, we couldn't meet to do our work because we hadn't done enough work. The committee met despite the improper cancellation, held our regular meeting for discussion only, and voted to hold another special meeting to resume the tasks this committee is charged with. Dr. Bell was not present at either of these meetings. The charge of this Calendar Standing Committee, our mission is to recommend a calendar that supports the pedagogical and operational needs of students, faculty, and staff within the framework of the negotiated agreements between the collective bargaining units and the district. The committee is composed of representatives from all major constituencies on this campus. Our calendar is fully vetted through shared governance, which is the only process whereby the pedagogical and operational needs of the institution can be determined and supported. Last year, the Board of Trustees dismissed the many hours of research consultation and consideration performed by this committee and all of the consideration performed by this committee and all of the other constituencies that participated in this process. This year, Dr. Bell continues to violate the charge of the committee and ignore the shared governance process. This past Monday, Dr. Bell sent the Calendar Committee an email stating that the Board of Trustees, quote, "Has acted and approved the fall, spring, summer calendar for 2013-14. The Calendar Committee would like to know when that happened." According to the minutes of the 8/29/12 Board of Trustees meeting, a tentative 2013-20, sorry, 2012-2013 calendar was approved. No minutes from any meeting since reference a 1314 calendar.
Thirty seconds.
Perhaps this is because it is not and never has been the board's purview or charge to determine the college's calendar. Dr. Bell and perhaps others seems to think otherwise. Prop 30 has passed. We see blue skies in the future, according to Dr. Rocha. We are no longer in an actual or predicted financial crisis. However, we are in a pedagogical and operational crisis here at this college, due at least in part to the mismanagement of the calendar. The current imposed calendar without winter is not a calendar for student success. Based on data received from Ipro, for 20 years, average retention and success rates for fall, spring, and summer terms are significantly higher since winter 2004, the first year that we had a winter session. That represents about... This represents about 5,000 more students succeeding in their classes per year, after adjusting for what you might call inflation. Also, the combined enrollment of winter and summer sessions has about 5,000 more students than when we had two summer sessions and no winter. Based on our charge, the Calendar Committee is recommending to the Board of Trustees that the configuration of the calendar for 2013-14 includes a winter session.
Okay, so this is Maria Rodriguez, correct? And to follow, I would like Belen Rodriguez to get ready, and Juan Diego Ashton. Just line up close by, please.
Good evening, Dr. Rocha, President Martin, and members of the board. Thank you for giving us the opportunity to speak tonight. Just for a moment of clarification, I'm up here with Maria. Do we get like double the time? Can we split it? How does that work? We won't go that long, but I just, you know, okay, good. All right. Well, I just, we're going to talk about something slightly different than what's been brought up here tonight, but I just, as I'm hearing all these students and faculty speak, I'm kind of brought back to when I first got here, as hired on as a faculty member a few years ago. We had our meetings in the circadian. You know, it was cozier, there was coffee and drinks for everybody, not just a few, and we were able to stand if we wanted to. I mean, I don't know, there's been kind of a tension in here that wasn't present earlier. And I remember being able to call up Dr. Mann and meet her for lunch, and Jeff, I had a chance to sit and talk with you, and you gave me helpful advice and helped get me elected when I ran for school board. And Jose, he's around here somewhere, we've gone out and had dinner too, one of our officers, and it's just something that collegiality has broken down a bit, and I think we can bring it back together. And I think there's a lot of energy here in the room, and hopefully, we can capitalize on that. But I want to talk to you guys tonight about, I want to introduce you to a young lady that we almost lost. One of the things I do here at PCC is I serve as a faculty advisor for an AB 540 student support group, United Without Boundaries, and it's taken on different names since I got here. And these are just some amazing students here on campus that have lived in the shadows. And when I first came on board and was asked to be a faculty advisor about six years ago, these are students who were really afraid. They wanted to find access to financial aid, internship opportunities, they wanted to be able to come and go on campus without fear. I recall a couple of years ago, one of my students was arrested, detained, and deported on her way to a midterm exam here on campus. And we live at exciting times right now, with deferred action being an option. Some of my students that I advised and counseled through a lot of the fear have graduated with honors from not just PCC, but Cal State LA, UCLA. I just wrote a letter of recommendation for a student who's entering into an R1 institution to get her master's degree and her teaching credential. I was able to celebrate her marriage. She has a driver's license, she applied for deferred action, and things are moving forward, but we have a ways to go. And I want to introduce you guys to a young lady that we almost lost. This is Maria Rodriguez. She is the president of United Beyond Boundaries. And, I'm sorry, United Without Boundaries, I blow it every time. And I'm going to let her bring up some things to you that I think you'd like to hear. So Maria.
Good evening, Dr. Rocha, President Martin, and members of the board. My name is Maria Rodriguez. I have been a student at PCC for six years. I've been, I'm sorry, I'm a little bit nervous. I've been here to, I came to PCC to obtain a higher education. I'm the first in my family to obtain a higher education. However, I left this campus because of my status. I'm an undocumented student, and I have faced many obstacles, and because of my status, I've had to stop my education, and however, I've been able to come back. I faced a lot of obstacles, and finally, I was able to come back to PCC. I left once this campus because I couldn't find the help and the information that I needed and the resources that I needed. I was almost done with my studies here at PCC. I was going to major as administration of justice, but because I didn't have a social security number, I couldn't finish the program. This was back in 2007, and so I decided to leave PCC. However, I came back because I wanted to continue my education and because I wanted to improve this school so that the students that are coming here at PCC with my same struggles do not have to go through the same things that I have had to face. I have been president of United Without Boundaries for a year now, and while I've seen the situation in the law improve for undocumented students, it's not enough. We are still under second-class treatment even here at PCC. We have improved things with the help of dedicated students and allies who are tired of seeing their friends or themselves being turned away, disrespected, and banned from basic services that we should be having access to in a basic public education, especially one that prides itself on student success. This whole time, we have lacked the support of the administration. We have received the support of individual staff and faculty.
Thirty seconds.
And for that, we thank you guys. But to have true equality, we need the support of everyone, including this board. We are living in a historic time, and the question of immigration is the question everywhere. Right now, there is a debate going on between Congress and Republicans, and between Democrats and Republicans in Congress around immigration reform, a debate that will determine the future, the fate and future of more than 11 million undocumented Americans, including many that attend this school. This is the most, this is the most clear opportunity in six, over six years since immigrant rights movement burst in 2006, to make a fight to win full citizenship rights for all immigrants and the dignity and respect that we deserve. Young people have been leading the fight for equal rights and for equality, and many cities and schools all over the country have been fighting for this cause. Now, we too must act to...
You're doing wonderful. You're making a wonderful presentation. We are kind of out of time. Do you mind kind of bring?
If you give me two more minutes, I'll wrap it.
Yeah, I'd like you to kind of bring it to a conclusion. Would you do that? Because we got a few more speakers, but you're doing a wonderful job.
Okay, thank you. We too must act to ensure the promises being made to pass federal G-MAC and keep their promises. Having said this, there will be a march on April 10 in Washington DC to demand the kind of immigrant reform, immigration reform that we want and deserve. United Without Boundaries is partnering up with BAM and other organizations at PCC and all over the country to have our school be represented in Washington. We are representing not only our school, but also the state of California that has been in the forefront of the fight for immigrant rights with victories like the G-MAC and deferred action. If there was ever a time that we need most support of this board and the entire school is now, Associate Students is providing $3,000 to support students to fly with our contingent to DC. The cost to sponsor a student is $500. At the least, we would want PCC, a PCC contingent of 15 to 20 students. We want you to commit yourselves to our school and our school model of student success and sponsor 10 students to the march on Washington DC for the federal G-MAC as part of the immigration reform. Thank you.
My name is Belen Rodriguez. Right now, I have homework for Math III and Business Calculus to do, but instead, I decided to come to this meeting because I care about my education, and I want to let you guys know, as leaders of PCC, how much I'm struggling in math. In fact, that's the only reason why I'm still in this campus, to fulfill my math requirements so that I can transfer. Majority of my Latino friends are also struggling in math, just like I do. I get As in English and Social Science, just like my Latino friends do. And I would like for you guys to offer, to bring back winter intercession and offer more math classes so that we can improve in math. PCC receives recognition for being a Latino Hispanic-serving institution, but why isn't PCC doing something to improve our math skills? And one more thing I would like to add, I would like to ask that you guys hire more Latinas so that when I'm having difficulties in school, I can have someone that I can go to, who I can relate to. Thank you.
I'd like to thank our heroes here in the front row one more time. And you know, I wish we could all be heroes. So I'd like to address the board tonight on a rather different issue. Has nothing to do with our calendar, but it is a very important issue that I think that the public and this board needs to hear. PACCD has reached the end of a five-year contract with Pepsi-Cola Beverage Company. As a result, the Food Service Advisory Committee was called to order for the purpose of formulation of a recommendation for a new beverage contract. The committee received presentations from healthy vending companies, Pepsi-Cola, and Coca-Cola. After careful consideration on December 7, and I believe you all have the agenda from our December 7 meeting that I passed to Mary here, after careful consideration on that date, seven out of eight committee members voted in favor of human healthy vending as a frontrunner for the new beverage contract for vending services. Since December 7, a three-month period has passed without information of any formal recommendation of the committee's decision to the superintendent president, Dr. Mark Rocha. As a separate matter, at the same time, the Food Service Advisory Committee has been looking into options for a food service vendor, which is a separate issue, and is going through an RFP process for food. The first round of RFPs, as they're called, only got one response, so a new RFP is being created by Joseph W. Semeneshi, our new executive director for business services. Today, without any prior information presented to the committee, Joe paid us a visit in the office of the Associated Students and stated that his decision, his decision, was to move forward with an umbrella RFP that would include both a food and beverage vending contract. We were told by Dr. Scott Fair and Joseph Semeneshi that the result of this meeting that we had on December 7 was meant to be a secret. But in fact, the action taken during our meeting on December 7 should have been made available to the public. Only after speaking with a friend well-versed in the Brown Act was I able to confirm that the contents of our meeting should have been, in either the case of a closed or open session meeting, reported publicly once our meeting had ended. If I had known that this was the case...
Thirty seconds.
I would have come before this board, a long time before now. I'll cut some of my presentation now and just move to an email that I sent to Jeffrey Baum, my representative here on the board. "As I read your recommendation," these are his words, "it would be best to submit it to Vice President Bob Miller as it is not a decision that the trustees would be involved in until a recommendation came forward from the administration." Unfortunately, the communication from Bob Miller has been supportive in face, such as in an email from AS President Simon Fraser to Bob Miller, President Fraser, "From the Guardian newspaper, a very interesting article on what's contained in regular types of sodas, including flame retardants for plastics and Gatorade. Given our vote on human in the affirmative and how it goes with the Board of Trustees, this might be an interesting opportunity for PCC to show its head of the game with regard to health and soda content." Bob Miller's response, "I could not agree more, and I'm very happy PCC is out on the lead on this. My thanks to AS and particularly Andrew Bott for moving forward in the manner done so." Still, to this point, nothing has been done to indicate that the proper procedure is taking place and that this contract discussion is moving toward what I would expect will receive resounding approval from this district and the community it represents. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention, and I want the board to consider it. Thank you.
Jacqueline Santos, Philip Rickards, and Dan Meyer.
Good evening, Dr. Rocha, President Martin, and members of the board. My name is Jacqueline Santos. I am a returning student and have been attending PCC for three semesters. I am vice president of United Without Boundaries, a club that provides a safe zone for undocumented students and all. My role in the club, aside from being vice president, is being an ally. An ally is a US citizen who believes and supports undocumented rights. Tonight, I want to share the importance of being an ally and why I urge all of you to be allies. As a US citizen and a PCC student, I have received all the privileges that have been designed for my success. However, I have also seen the struggles that students who are not granted such privileges. I have seen friends and families being rejected just for their status. I have seen friends and families afraid of their own campus. I have seen friends and families quitting school because reaching out for student, for reaching out for staff, counselors, is unthinkable because they are afraid of their status. So as an ally, I say it's enough. This is not an individual issue. This is a community issue. We are all students. We are all here for a better future. Me being a US citizen does not make me better or less than any student here. We all deserve the same rights. PCC should not have one club that provides a safe zone for all of our students. All of our students should feel safe, all of our students should feel safe to come to our campus. All of our students should feel welcomed. I ask that our staff and faculty be prepared to help any and all students. No student should be turned away because of their status. A large amount of our campus is undocumented, so I urge you to support our community and become an ally. Thank you.
Is Philip here? Philip Rickards? Dan Meyer? Sarah Belkow?
Yes. It really is a pleasure to see you guys again. I'm happy to be back and to speak to you, and I wanted to say hello and good evening first. I would like to try to focus on a couple of positive things tonight. One thing that I think we should all be really proud of in this room is the level of civic engagement and dedication of the students at Pasadena City College. I don't know if you know this, but there are not very many Board of Trustees meetings with a full room on campuses across California community colleges, and the fact that you have students who are willing to come, meeting after meeting, time after time, to be involved directly in the democratic processes that govern our college is really something amazing. It's really amazing. And I know I said I was going to be mostly positive, but I have to touch on a couple of roadblocks that we face as students who are trying to be active in our community and to make a positive change in this place that we share. be active in our community and to make a positive change in this place that we share. I arrived here with 20 students, I think at about 7:39, and the doors were locked and there was no one outside to tell us that there was a meeting indoors. There's absolutely no indication that there's anything happening in the meeting. You see that these windows are opaque. We can't even see the lights on. We can't even see what's happening. So we're standing in front with locked doors everywhere we go and no one to talk to to ask, is there a meeting inside? Is it canceled? Where is everybody? When we finally found a couple of cadets to talk to, they let us know that there was a fire code violation, but they couldn't tell us exactly which one. And they let us know that there was, no way we'd be able to get inside. Because of the dedication of the students, they decided not to leave, most of them. A few of them unfortunately lost to other commitments because they can't wait outside for 30, 40, 50 minutes, an hour. And so they weren't able to come and participate tonight. And I find that very unacceptable, especially when a quick count of the seats available in the room showed that there was more than enough room for everyone outside to come in here and have a seat and participate in this process. So I think you have to ask yourselves if people, if there's room for people to participate in the process, but the access for them to physically get in the room is blocked, are you really welcoming that participation? And I would, I would like to let you know that we also have a wonderful Associated Students government who are working very hard to try to make sure, to minimize the damage done by the winter cancellation. I have witnessed personally them spending 30, 40, 50 hours in a week trying to email and call representatives from Cal States and UCs to beg them, to beg them to not hurt our students who didn't have a say in this change and who didn't want it and who couldn't stop it no matter how hard they tried. And the fact that you have students who are willing to, I think if you take the stipend and divide it by hours, it works out to 50 cents to a dollar an hour for their time. When they're willing to be paid 50 cents an hour to go out there and contact the UCs and the Cal States and to try to get this transfer, there are plenty of people who are paid more than 50 cents an hour who should be doing that. And they're not right now. And that's very frustrating. And I want to thank the Associated Students for the work that they've done and the strong advocacy that they've taken of students. I also want to especially thank John Fraser, who stayed outside today at this meeting, missing the majority of the meeting with me, to make sure that every single student who wanted to participate would be able to come inside. That is some excellent leadership and I think that's a strong moral choice. And I think it, it shows what caliber of students we have here. And I really, I really hope that you can imagine how awful it feels to care so much about a place and to come prepared with a five-minute speech and to be the president of the college who represents all 26,000 students and to be cut off and not allowed to finish. As a student, that's hard for me to see, that the person who I, I voted for, I directly supported, who I wanted to represent me here at this college, is not even allowed an additional two or three minutes. And I understand that we've got a lot and we're already here really late and I appreciate you guys being here really late, but he represents all of us. And if he can't speak, then...
Thank you. Okay, we have Naghem, Weeby Naghem, to be followed by Garrett King, and then Melissa Michelson.
Come on up, please. Yeah.
Good evening. First, a big thank you to our AS board. You truly represent us, the students. We are thankful for all your hard work and we fully support you. Second, Board of Trustees, reality check. Before winter was canceled, the administrations and some, the administration and some trustees claimed that the cancellation won't affect us, that rather it is for us and for our success. Remember the 1666 theory instead of 6166? And it's the same thing? Well, it's not the same thing. The administration and some trustees said the cancellation of winter is necessary and can't wait one extra week for further research and discussion. And then winter was canceled despite our efforts, despite our public comments, despite our petition. While we are here now, obviously all the claims before the decision were false claims, I want to bring to your attention that we wanted to work together. We don't like this us against you scenario, but we tried everything else and it didn't work. Finally, I know that you say, and I've heard it so many times, that student success is your first interest, but actions speak louder than words. I hope, I hope you remember that your constituents are our parents, families, neighbors, friends, and our communities. Thank you.
Simply speaking, this is going to be very brief as opposed to a long-winded speech. Other than the small issue, which in my opinion honestly is major, where you shorthanded Simon his time, I'm actually pleasantly surprised with this meeting. I came here probably approximately six months ago for the one in which you guys, in my opinion, shoved the concept of winter intercession being cut pretty much down our throats. And I am pleasantly surprised that you are allowing everyone, for the most part, their time and keeping this an orderly and public quorum. So with that note, thank you for being more mature and, in all honesty, allowing us to have our, our time. Although I would like to request one thing, which is that as a public comment, if, is it possible to comment after what you guys are about to speak about or is that, that's not allowed? I mean, I don't understand how that's kind of shared governance as well because we won't be able to respond to you. If, if you're bringing up an issue, we have to wait until the next meeting? I'm just curious. So, thank you for your time.
Melissa?
Hi. Good evening. My name is Melissa Michelson. I'm going to read from you some excerpts from August 29th, 2012. I call it, "In Case You Missed It: How the Board You Cut Winter." Hannah Israel, student trustee, "Implementing this change, I feel there's no effective way to do it and students are going to be impacted by this. And at a time when PCC is so backlog with students, I don't think this information can get to them quick enough. I've been an associate student for two years. It has been so difficult to get information out to students. There's no infrastructure in place and students register with old emails. They aren't prompted to fix them. I wanted to let everyone know that there's a serious buy-in to save winter intercession. There's serious shared governance, participatory governance, buy-in to keeping this winter, this calendar. If I can just echo the sentiments of Prof. Hanvey, I think with, with how this meeting was conducted today, it proves that there's a lot of unanswered questions and there's a lot of collaboration that needs to take place before such a calendar change is made. And so I'll leave it there." Linda Waugh, "Well, actually, Trustee Thompson did ask a question that I wanted clarification on, that I guess if the board were to defer the decision until and allow President Hanvey and President Fraser and Dr. Bell maybe to meet and to see whether or not we could mitigate this, I mean, is it likely that we would be able to come up with a solution quickly so that the board could have a special meeting?" Or Simon Fraser, "We can arrange a meeting anytime. We could arrange a meeting for next week if..." Linda Waugh, "I mean, if, I mean, with all the issues, is that even viable for us to even defer this? With all of the issues that you are and all of the, I guess, contentions against the calendar, would you even have the time to mitigate any of these issues?" Simon Fraser, "Again, I hesitate to speak as the Senate has not really discussed the trimester calendar, but I do feel that the faculty were away. They were on vacation and we just got back this week. And this week especially is extremely stressful. And I think it would be really important, before a decision is made on this matter, for faculty to feel that they had a chance, at least to express their views about it in terms of pedagogy from the Senate's perspective. And of course, there are sort of load issues that faculty associations could discuss as well, as well. But I think in respect to those well-meaning faculty, they really want to just make sure they have a chance to weigh in first. I think it would be respectful if we were to let them have the chance before you make a decision." Jeffrey Baum, Dr. Mann, Jeanette Mann, "It's my understanding that the board has already made the decision and there will be no classes during the winter intercession. I hope everyone understands this. We're talking about a winter intercession with no classes, no classes. So this decision is really, are we going to have a winter session with no classes or furlough all the non-faculty and the faculty, also in a sense will be furloughed because none of them will be teaching? Or are we going to start the semester earlier and have everyone on campus? No one will be furloughed and then we will have two summer sessions where everyone will be employed and faculty will have classes to teach? That to me is the decision that we're looking at. The rest is history."
Kelly Camacho?
President Martin.
And I will call again for Philip Rickards. Is he here? Or Dan Meyer? These are the last two.
President Martin, if I could just clarify that I think the comments that were attributed to me were actually meant to be attributed to President Hanvey of the Academic Senate from the transcript, the last couple relating to faculty load. Okay.
Good evening, members of the board, students and faculty who have held on strong, who are still here in this meeting. I would like to talk quickly about shared governance, shared governance that exists only in our minds on this campus. A beautiful fleeting idea that doesn't exist in what I fondly call reality. On this campus, shared governance involving decisions equates changing a board meeting to a different location, miles away from the actual school, barring students from entering, and then making a decision which will impact our futures negatively without even listening to us. Here's an idea. If a lot of students come and sit through what is a boring, unfun meeting and bang on the doors to get into a boring, unfun meeting, maybe we have some pertinent information. If you had let us, if you had let us into that meeting, we could have told you that canceling winter in August, actually not August 29th, so end of August, would have been a bad idea. It's not a hindsight issue. It's not a prophecy issue. It's a "we know how transfer actually works" issue. And to be, and to be honest, if our administration was willing to cut winter at the nth hour, at the end of August, frankly, I don't know if they have malicious intent toward our students or they're ineffectual, but either way, it's completely obscene. So I would like to recommend to the board next time, and it's happening now, six months later, it's happening now, but it's too late. Students are already having trouble with transfers. Our FTEs are down and we might not get our Prop 30 money. We're literally, we might be out $6 million to save $600,000. It makes absolutely no sense. And if you had listened to the students who banged on the doors, who wanted to get into the meeting, none of this would have happened and it's not a hindsight issue. Thank you.
So we are now, believe it or not, moving on to item D, which is approval of the minutes. And I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any corrections or additions to? We have two sets, meeting number four and meeting number five. Okay. Advisory vote. Wow. And remainder of the board? So those will pass, I believe unanimously. Approval of the consent items, item E. Is there, is there anyone on the board who wishes to discuss a consent item? Mr. Baum?
I'd like to pull item 75P for discussion. And then I'd like to pull item 73P for discussion.
Dr. Mann?
I have a question on 113B and a comment I'd like to make on 72P.
Any others? Maybe we'll take the comments and then get a motion at the end. So let's go to 113B. Dr. Mann?
This is the word of the contract to the audit for the annual audit services. And my question was, how was the audit committee involved? And we did receive a, I think a brief report, but I would like to hear from the audit committee on how the process went, if they felt it was, they were involved in it appropriately.
Okay. I am so sorry. You may have to repeat some of that because there's a little bit of noise out there, a little bit of noise here and...
I'll repeat it. It's on one...
My ears aren't working like they used to, so can you just, can you repeat that? I'm sorry.
Okay. 113B is the awarding of a contract for the annual audit services. My question is, how was the audit committee involved in this process and do they feel that their involvement was appropriate? And that's my question.
Okay. Thank you. That's a good question. And I'm going to look to a member of the audit committee. And, well, trustee Brown is going for the mic.
Sure. Well, Dr. Miller, well, not Miller, doctor yet, but he's just about there. He did make a mistake and did send the information, I guess after he spoke with our president or chairperson. I reviewed the process and I was pretty comfortable with what I read at home. So if, to answer your question, Jeanette, we were not really involved in the process, but the ends were appropriate to me. So, that's mine.
Is there, Mr. Baum?
I'd just say, I was, I'm also a member of the audit committee. Dr. trustee Brown is correct. The committee wasn't consulted before the recommendation was made, however, I am familiar with the, two of the three firms. One is our longtime auditing firm that we've used ever since I've been on the board. One is, the recommended firm is the firm that we've been working with very closely. And Dr. Vice President Miller provided a, the background information to members of the committee today about the various bids and, and why the recommendation is coming forward. And after reviewing that, I do support the recommendation.
Are you my third member on the committee?
I wasn't on, I just got on the committee.
You just got on the committee, so we were going to go with that. Okay. Does that answer your question, Dr. Mann?
It answers my question, but I would, I, I think the GASP rules are pretty strict and I would hope we'd be more careful about making sure the committee is involved in a more active way in the future.
Yeah, I, I think, I think that's so noted. The initial request did go out to 30 firms across the state. I think there were, as I understand it, numerous replies and several interviews. So I do feel it was, it was, though I believe the trustees should have been involved at the get-go, it was definitely well-vetted. And, and the trustees were looped in here at the end and all comfortable, as I understand, with the recommendation. Thank you. Okay. 72P, Mr., no, that's also Dr. Mann.
I just wanted to comment that Jeffrey Mattis, I guess the way you pronounce his name, is retiring from health sciences after 24 years of service. Another example of our dedicated faculty and commend him on his retirement.
Thank you. 73B, Mr. Baum?
I do want to make one comment, a point of privilege on 68P. It's a item on compensation for academic personnel. And the only comment is, reviewing this, I see that there are a number of faculty, including Professor McCabe, who was here earlier, and others who are working to develop online course curriculum. And I hope, and I expect that is to further meet both a policy objective as well as the governor's request that community colleges develop more online programming and that faculty are being compensated significantly for that. So we appreciate the work of the faculty to, to do that. I had a question about 72, 73P. I wasn't aware of this policy at PCC and so I just want to make it clear that a, so a faculty member can, can elect to continue with, as a, with full benefits as a reduced workload? Is that an indefinite? What's the background on that policy and have we ever had anybody do this in recent years?
Well, I'd only say the, it is longstanding in the faculty contract for many years before the current administration. So we had an individual, I can't cite the article and subsection, but we had an individual who applied for this program under the existing contract.
Well, I'd only say the, it is longstanding in the faculty contract for many years before the current administration. So we had an individual, I can't cite the article and subsection, but we had an individual who applied for this program under the existing contract, which we are bound to follow.
Sure. I just don't recall it happening, maybe some of the more veteran Board members, and as long as it's compliant with our contract, I'm happy to support it. My last item was on the recommendation for faculty, it actually 75P and 78 through 78P, we are making a number of personnel moves, including the granting of tenure to faculty, and I wanted to have somebody from one of the academic divisions because the granting of tenure is one of the most important decisions a board makes, because once an individual is granted tenure, that is in essence a contract for life for a member of the faculty. And I just, before we make it, I want to give the administration opportunity to brag about these amazing faculty, that we are moving to full-tenured positions within the college, and then also congratulate the other faculty members who are being recommended for promotion.
Okay, well, President Hanvey.
I'd just like to let the Board know that on the advice of our Vice President, A.C. Pinella, we intend for the first time at our Academic Senate Breakfast to honor these nine individuals. We usually have honored the well-deserved work of our retirees, but Pinella really believes, and I happen to really agree with him, that these people deserve to get rewarded as well. And there's also the possibility that we actually acknowledge our people who have completed their first year here at PCC as well at that same breakfast.
I saw Dr. Bell was about to raise his hand, just to kind of talk about it.
And trustee Baum, I'm with Alan, this is always a pleasure to brag on the faculty, and again, the faculty who are coming to the end of their tenure track process, I haven't had a chance to work with them directly, but I know of their work, the faculty who are moving into their first and second years, I've been able to work with them directly. They're all outstanding faculty, and I applaud the Board on the decision to award them continuance on the contract and tenure for those that end the fourth year because they very well deserve it.
Okay. Seeing no further questions, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay. Dr. Fellows and trustee Brown is the second. Trustee, the student trustee advisory vote, thank you, and all remaining trustees, thank you. That passes unanimously. We are at Item G, the Report and Update, College Operations and Initiatives. Dr. Rocha.
Yeah, thank you, President Martin, Board of Trustees. I do have a brief, brief comments, because I wanted to be respectful of the colleagues and individuals who made comments tonight, and I know the press is here tonight, and I'll be glad to make myself available to the press so that they can get the story right. So, but I wanted to make comments. I invited all my friends and family here tonight, but somehow they got the address wrong. We must have moved the meeting. But I'm going to ask all of you, the few of you who say, what we did tonight, in my opinion, is drive-by consultation. You say, you say what you say, and we respect it deeply, okay? And then you get up and go. So until the college is able to have a meaningful conversation, and I'm not, with the exception of Simon, I met with today and we had a perfectly reasonable meeting, I'm not aware of perhaps any of the individuals who spoke tonight coming through my open door. And those of you who have come through it know that it's always open. But let me say a couple of things for the record, since there were some things, and in this case, I am not in any way defending myself, but I want to say some things for the record to defend this Board of Trustees and my colleagues who are sitting over there, who do the very, very difficult work, some of them sitting over here, who do the very, very difficult work of helping me to run the college. Before I do that, though, I did want to have a, an introduction, because I see over there on the right, I wanted to introduce one of the Board members of our PCC Foundation, Shirley Burt, who has been here all night, so I'd ask us to give her a big hand.[883.87][883.87](APPLAUSE). Shirley is a PCC nurse. And also, sitting with Shirley earlier was Dolores Higginbottom, who is the Chair of the President's African-American Advisory Committee, and I'm sorry, I didn't get a chance to thank Dolores, Bob Bell, all of the many people in the college who contributed to what was a glorious Black History Month, okay? But let me, let me just say a couple of things, if you wouldn't mind, and I hope that there'll be Salv and Baum. But if you've ever had the experience of serving on a jury, some of you may have, you see that, you know, there's one trial, one defendant, and the prosecution gets up and presents the case and the evidence, and you're sitting there in the jury box and you say, "I don't even know why we're having a trial. We should just send the guy right straight to jail." Okay? And then, okay, then the defense gets up and says, "Okay, this is the same evidence, this is the same stuff," all right? And you're sitting in the jury box, if you've ever had that experience, and saying, "They must have the wrong guy." Okay? My point simply is this, and for those of you, and I know all of you are of goodwill, since many of the people who I'd hoped to talk to left, that if you can admit tonight the possibility that human beings see things through different points of view, let that be the beginning of a conversation, the continuation of a conversation that will move us forward. For a moment, I'm asking, since I listened respectfully to all of the comment, and you can imagine what it feels like to hear it, I just ask if there's a teeny, a few of you, a teeny part of you, okay, that would be willing to say, "Okay, let's take a look at this another way," because I know we are. Couple of things. First of all, I do want to let everyone know, and the Board clearly knows, I don't need to remind the Board, that I serve at the pleasure of the Board, okay? And there is nothing that I do that I do not clear in advance with the Board, and I have complete guidance from the Board in terms of the decisions. So I want to make that clear, and the Board, you know, knows that better than anybody. But I also want to make clear that, given that, when I came to PCC, so that we don't have, you know, to have a healthy conversation, you want to try and move out of magical thinking, that somehow the present got all bundled up and there was a past, okay, that was somehow this kind of, just everything was wonderful. PCC has been here since 1924, was founded long before any of us got here, had a long reputation of excellence before any of us got here, okay? We're stewards of that reputation. But I would say, when I took over, I was the fourth Superintendent President in four years, okay? I'm not responsible for what happened before that time. All I know is I picked it up from where I was given it by this Board. And when I did pick it up, just to remind especially students who may not have been here, some of you may have, at the time, when we began our work together, this college was not accredited. It had been placed on warning by the ACCJC for, among other things, not having proper shared governance for years, okay? You need to read the report. This college, among the citations by the accreditor before I arrived, the college had no educational master plan, okay? We've since, since have one. We did not have a self-report card that reported outcomes. Some people cited statistics. The statistics of our student outcomes are on our webpage on our own self-report card, and the State of California issues an accountability report for the community colleges. And one of the things that the trustees took a look at, look at the August 29th, was that the student outcomes, while not poor, were not improving. Those are facts, okay? There was no IT. There's no information system. The current information system that we're still limping along with was installed in 1984. So we had had that to do. The contract with my colleagues in the Faculty Association, when I took over, it had been expired for over a year, and I came to agreement with the Faculty Association by January of that year. That contract has, has again expired by almost a year, and we are at impasse, as well you know. And so we need to factor in that in the difficult times we are, that sometimes labor-management relations will be strained because we don't agree. But we're moving through that in a perfectly open legal process that the Faculty Association understands. So there was no contract in place when I arrived. There was a violation of AB 1725, because I know AB 1725, and one of the things that you're supposed to do is to rely primarily on the Faculty Senate for faculty hiring. That didn't exist when I came. I corrected that. And I returned the faculty hiring priorities process to the Academic Senate. They do all, the young woman, and I agree 100% that we need to hire more Latina faculty, that's in the hands of the Senate. And so, and on my watch, we have approved 60 new faculty, despite budget constraints, and 10 new ones just this year. In addition, there was no, we were cited by the ACCJC for no ethic statements, no policies for distance education. Sandra Haynes won the award, won the award for Board of Governors. Now, I'm saying this not in any way to be defensive, but I know some of my colleagues are new who do this hard work every day, and I just wanted to make sure, since the press is here, that we kind of said, "Look, there's a reason for differing points of view." We listened respectfully. So there was quite a bit of stuff here when I picked it up and the Board gave me the privilege of serving them, okay? I'll continue to do so until the Board asks me not to. But let me tell you what we've accomplished, all right? I hear very well, the Board has heard the input about the calendar, and I won't speak to that right now. But I said, one of the things that this Board should be congratulated for is that this college, this year, at this moment, has added more classes to our 12-13 schedule than any other college or district in the State of California. More colleges serving more students faster. There is not a single student in this college, not one, who presents themselves or herself to Dr. Bell, who has been shut out of a class. We have open sections specifically for three or four students so that they could have the courses they needed. And that's what the spring semester enabled us to do. Instead of putting 200 or 300 sections out, we were able to put 2,500 sections out, so that all of the students, and most of our entering students are basic skills, who English and math in the fall, in our amazing pathways program, were able to start right up after the holiday and go back into English and math. Now, the results will be proven over time, but certainly that was a reasonable basis, even if you disagree. But the Board went one better. As well you know, we had a flaming budget crisis every moment that I've been Superintendent President. We instituted budget discipline, we balanced the budget every year, and we added classes, and we added, in a difficult budget environment, besides hiring those faculty, we added research and development, but this Board took a risk and funded $1 million for Student Access and Success Initiative. Because of that investment, which wasn't even thought of three years ago, we have the Design Technology Pathways, we have the Math Jam Pathways, which is now on steroids, has grown from 150 to almost 1,000 students, and for all of that work, which didn't exist three years ago, the State Chancellor's Office awarded this year Pasadena City College the Award for Student Success. So, and, you know, I'm looking over at Shirley, thanks to Shirley, and the devoted alumni. PCC in the last three years has been number one in fundraising in the state, number one. PCC has been in the top five in grants, $26 million in new grants for the state, every dollar of which is going out to help students, okay? So, I just wanted to, oh, and one just note, and give you a point of personal privilege here, the safe zone, okay? I stood up, Prop 187, okay? I couldn't agree more. There's no one in my administration who is not a dream actor, a dream act, AB 540. We have to be a safe zone for every human being, since there are no illegal human beings who comes to our campus for help. That is the law of this campus. So, and I fought for that earlier in my career, and I won't bore you with that. The last thing the Board did is we don't have the money from Prop 30. I asked the Board, and the Board had to go some. They went right to the ledge on this recommendation, when I asked them to borrow $10 million this year to fund what? Classes for students, more classes than any other college in the State of California, okay? We are funding those classes and all of the things that I've talked about on money the Board agreed to borrow. Now, yes, we will get that money, at least it's promised. We have an IOU from Jerry Brown, you know, June 15th, that we'll get that money, okay? Great. But most colleges in the state did not add those classes because they had drained their reserves, which this Board did not, and were not able to use that borrowed money for the benefit of students. Now, I recognize better than anybody in my long career that people won't agree with the decisions of an administration, and clearly, we heard that tonight. But at least, and these are the things that I have time for, some of the things that I've mentioned tonight ought to purchase us a conversation, not a "ch-ch-ch" and boom, okay? Purchase us a conversation because how to move forward. Because if, in the wisdom of this Board of Trustees, that you want to have a fifth Superintendent President in seven years, all of those problems will still be there. The need to have all of that conversation in difficult circumstances, and I couldn't agree more, they need to come together, okay? We need to come together, okay? But I wanted to say what I wanted to say, and thank you for the privilege. That's my report for tonight, because I wanted to make sure that the Board heard this from me, and that my colleagues, with whom I'm honored to serve, heard it from me. And hopefully, we can get my friends and family back in the room, and we can, you know, keep that, keep that conversation going. Thank you, President Martin. That's my report.
Thank you, Dr. Rocha.
President Martin?
Yes.
I, I was hoping Dr. Rocha would say this, but he did touch on it at the beginning. One of the students asked the question, "When are you going to respond to us?" And I just wanted to point out, and most of the people are gone, but all these comments we heard were for items not on the agenda. And by the Brown Act, we cannot respond to items not on the agenda. So if you, and I think President Rocha was commenting, was right, if you want to have a dialogue, start a dialogue, the way to do it is not, is not coming and giving us information for items not on the agenda, because, but we can't answer you, we can't engage in a dialogue, just, just as a point of information.
Thank you. Mr. Rocha, thank you for that, what you had to say, but I wish you would have also mentioned that it is what your policies and the policies of this Board, as far as faculty go, this is one of the few colleges that faculty were not furloughed. Universities were furloughed, and this is also a college where faculty or teachers... And this is also a college where faculty are teaching 18 units, which is unheard of. And so, by the efforts of this board and your leadership, this has been permitted, and the faculty should be very happy. And I'm talking as one person who's been in higher education for 30 years. Thank you.
Okay. I think we're going to go to other announcements by shared governance representatives, and I can say back, by popular demand, is AS President Frazier.
Yes, such a, such a popular demand.
So, there's no limit here.
Well, I, I-
You're not a member of the public, you're the president, so-
Well, I, I try not to take up report time with, with too much of that, but I will want, I do want to say that it is hard to have a conversation with the, with the precepts of the Brown Act and the Sunshine Law. It, it's hard to know when the appropriate place for dialogue is, and frankly, a business meeting generally isn't a conducive place for dialogue. And so, maybe the, the answer to that would be for us all to find a different forum where we can do that. The Associated Students will offer the format again. Hosts town halls, which allow for informal discussion on any topic without action being taken, no ability of anyone to promise anything. So, it's the perfect sort of solution to that, and I'd like to proffer it as a, as an additional solution. Because, as I'll speak for myself and for the students, we definitely want to come to the conversation, and we believe that we have been trying to have the conversation. And I'll, I'll just leave it there for that. March in March was better attended than we'd ever anticipated. We took 40 more students than we had anticipated, for a total of 100, 180 students. And it was fantastic to see so many of our students get up there by bus and by plane with the PCC Blue Keep Calm and March On shirts. And if you look at any single news report of the event, you'll see them right at the front of the, of the image. And it's a fantastic show for Pasadena City College, I think, as a, us fighting externally as a unit for higher education. The transfer update I will give is that the Associated Students has continued. It's made it its top priority to outreach to four-year institutions. We have done so, and we've received reasonable success with a couple of the CSUs. Some, we haven't heard as positive results back, so we're continuing to follow up. Our AS website has a sticky on the front page, which has all of the colleges we have contacted, the ones we are waiting to hear back from, and the yeses and the nos, and if there are nos, what the student can do to further try and, and get themselves in, if, if the issue is one of calendar. And with the cooperation of Dr. Bell, we will be sending out an email blast to students once again, as best as we can, to try and identify any other students that haven't as yet come forward, to ensure that they are taken care of quickly and efficiently. Election season has already started for the Associated Students. That will be exciting for whoever takes my place. And finally, I will just say that I, I, my board has been working incredibly hard. This year, we've managed to, and a lot of this will be at our next meeting, which is in April. The bike program has been overwhelmingly responded to with people purchasing the fold-and-go bicycles in a partnership with City of Pasadena, with an additional rebate provided by the Associated Students. The clubs have gone on more different retreats and more activities than they've ever been able to, a lot of them very educational and informative. Clave is just one example of taking students to universities, students who wouldn't traditionally have thought about higher education and moving on to a four-year, now being encouraged to. I'm told that the Intervasity Christian Fellowship trip went incredibly well, and they were thankful for your support. I want, I would be asked to pass that along. And finally, we look forward to the April 3rd meeting, which unfortunately for me is my birthday, but that's life, I'll, I'll be here anyway. And, yes, so we will be here for that, and I look forward to working together to put together the agenda for that portion of the meeting as soon as we can. Oh, and the final thing is that the Associated Students was watching the Board of Governors this weekend, and we were very happy to hear that the SSC will be, be able to be providing input on the strategic plan for the Board of Governors, and AS looks forward to providing its input through the SSC representatives. Thank you.
Okay, classified?
Yes, the Classified Senate has been very busy. One of the things that we're working on lately is planning for Classified Day, which will be held on May the 8th. This is a day that we set aside to help classified staff development. We're planning workshops that include technology-based workshops, such as the Apple iPad technology and how it will be useful for us in our jobs. We're also planning a workshop that is for CPR training, as more of us should be able to do that. We're also brainstorming of scholarship fundraising ideas, and these scholarships go to benefit not only the students, but also the classified staff who are currently taking classes to further their education. And lastly, we continue to appoint classified staff members to not only shared governance committees, such as planning and priority, priorities committee, but also we're appointing people to, for various hiring committees.
And Academic Senate?
Good evening. I just have three items. Number one, I just wanted to remind you that, because it's before your next meeting, Hector Tolbar, by, on, on senate support, will be speaking here at PCC on April 2nd, here in this room, from 12 to 1:30, and certainly, the general public and the Board of Trustees are welcome to come and attend that, and ask him questions, and have him sign a book. Second, that I'm really pleased that the Board of Trustees has agreed to have the, our scholarship awards ceremony before your meeting, I think it was April 30th. And I think this is a great opportunity for our students to actually have their parents and have you present, as we reward some of our really outstanding students here at PCC. And then finally, I'd like to thank Dr. Bell and the President. Over spring break, I was actually a little bit busy, and we did get the agreement for the 10 hires, which is actually higher than the seven that the board approved earlier. And I, I'd like to express the gratitude of pretty much everybody on that committee for that higher number. Thank you.
Thank you. Management?
Thank you. Well, we're busy planning parties, the retirement breakfast, so it's one of the things we, we're good at, I think. So, and that'll be, you'll all be invited officially, but that'll be Thursday before graduation. And then I'd like to say a couple of things that, from the natural sciences standpoint. One is I want to thank Trustee Brown and Dr. Bell for participating in STEM Day about a week and a half ago. On Saturday, we had about 300 middle school boys and girls, and they each had a science experience, a couple of science experiences, primarily down in Science Village, but also in a couple of the other places. And it was a really big success. We really, really had a good turnout. I unfortunately was not able to be there, but I heard great things about it. And then lastly, I wanted to tell you about one of your faculty you tenured. She began as a student, and then became a lab tech, and then became an adjunct in-house tenured, and that's Sonia Valentine.
Okay. Announcements by the board? We'll start with Trustee Israel.
No reports.
And Mr. Thompson?
No reports.
Trustee Wa.
Yeah, I just wanted to make everyone aware that Senator Lou has started a, a series of roundtable discussions on education, and particularly, looking at what are the issues that she, as the Chair of the Education Committee up in Sacramento, needs to bring before the legislature. And she is also looking for input on how we, I guess, responses to the Governor's proposal on the weighted funding model. And so, I think she's going to be holding these, I think she said, on Wednesdays, and I'm not sure if it's every Wednesday, but I'm sure it'll be on her website. And then, one of the other things, as you know, I'm on the LA County School Board, so one of the things we're doing is, we're trying to bring the K-12 trustees and the community college trustees closer together to work on common issues. And, and one of the things that brought up, got brought up at the last, at the reception that we had for Chancellor Harris, was the transfer of adult education to the community colleges. And the K-12s were very concerned about how that was going to happen. And they expressed that same concern at Senator Lou's roundtable. And so, we're going to start kicking off a series of discussions on collaboration, on common issues between the K-12s and the CCCs. And the first issue we're going to discuss will be the adult ed. So, I, I hope that all of my colleagues will come and participate, and have all of our K-12 colleagues also come, and I'll send you further information on that.
Nothing, thank you.
Trustee Brown?
No report.
Trustee Mann?
I have a very brief report about the activities of Legislative Advocacy Committee, and some of the others. Trustee Israel and Trustee Thompson and I did go to Washington DC. Seems like a long time, but we haven't had a meeting since then. On February 12th, 13th, and 14th, President Rocha went, and Mr. Gutierrez, and we had a number of very, I think, very fruitful-
I went down.
Oh, I'm sorry, Trustee Baum, I, I didn't even have your name down, sorry. We had very, we had a number of very, I think, very interesting and productive meetings with legislatures and officials in some of the governmental agencies, and got a lot of ideas about ways that we could work more effectively with, with our elected representatives, and find ways to find, or opportunities for our students, like internships and fellowships and such things. After we returned, then the, since Trustee Wa was unable to go with us, then Trustee Martin and I met with Trustee Wa, and with, no, you weren't, didn't go to this one, and President Rocha, and Mr. Chavez, and we, Gutierrez, and we discussed, shared the information we'd received, some of the packets. And we are working on putting together a proposal that we're going to bring to the full board, and when we do, we will have all the information that we will share, but we will have it pulled together in a synthesis, and we'll be presenting that sometime this spring.
And Trustee Baum?
Thank you. I have a couple of announcements. One is, first, I was at the Board of Governors meeting, and to speak to President Frazier's comments too, I'm sorry, John Frazier, I, I guess he had to leave as well, that the PCC delegation really made a powerful impact in Sacramento at the March on March. There were about 3,000 students showed up, but people knew that the Pasadena City College students were in the house. And I, I was in the Capitol that day and the following day, and the, I saw Chris Holden and, and others, and they said, they were, they, they heard loud and clear from the students. The other great, great thing that happened during that meeting was what Dr. Rocha briefly alluded to, but Sandra Haynes on our faculty from the, I think she Visual Arts and Media Studies Division, won the top faculty for the state of California, and was recognized by the Academic Senate. Michelle Piladi presented the award, as did the Board of Governors. And, and is, is such a, an inspiring educator, that I, I hope that we find an opportunity to celebrate this recognition for Sandra Haynes at Pasadena City College, because it is truly a high honor, and, and I don't recall ever a Pasadena City College faculty member being so honored. So, I'm hoping that we, we recognize. She was here in the audience earlier, and I would, I wanted to call her out, but hopefully maybe at the next meeting. Finally, as a member of the Board of Governors and Vice President of the Board of Governors, we did hear from some student trustees who inquired about the situation at Pasadena City College. And, and also, I had personal conversations with the Chancellor and the Vice Chancellor for Academic Affairs. And I got to tell you candidly, the Associated Students, you're losing credibility with statewide, because you're making, you've made this case that the Associated Students are the only ones working on behalf of, of students in the college, when the Chancellor's Office reported back to me that they're doing everything they can to work with our administration, and, and our administration has been in touch with them for months, in, in working with the Cal State systems, to work out whatever technical issues are required to make sure that students are not adversely impacted by any change in the calendars. Moreover, Pasadena City College is not the only district that changed its calendar or adjusted its session. So, when you, when people are going out there and saying, "We're the only ones working on behalf of students," it is just beginning to actually deteriorate the credibility of the Associated Students with the state. And to, to minimize the, the efforts that I've been, that I've been made aware of by the Chancellor's Office and by our Vice President for Academic Affairs, who have worked and have not been refused, as far as I know, by any UC or CSU, to make sure that any student who has a need will be met. It just is not what I think is the, the tradition and what we want to project, the excellence of Pasadena City College. And I just think you should be aware of that.
Okay. I was just going to report that I had the opportunity to go through the Center for the Arts tour, along with the other Measure P committee members. I am, again, very impressed with our Measure P committee members, they're very knowledgeable and insightful. But the Center for the Arts is just going to be one incredible building. There's just a lot of features in there, once you get inside and see what's going on. They're doing a fantastic job, and it's just going to be gorgeous, so just update you on that. We are at future board meeting dates. Our next meeting is scheduled for April 3rd, and we are working on a joint meeting, are we not? With April 16?
Yes, we have. The-
Is it really Tuesday?
April 16th, we're on for a pre-USD joint meeting.
Yes, we are.
Where is that, Mary? Did we set the venue?
I think it may be at the Pasadena Senior Center.
Oh, the senior center, okay. Over there on-
On Holly.
Yes.
Is that where we had it last time? Is that the place we had it last time?
No, well, if it's on Holly, then it's not where we had it last time. It's at the Jackie Robinson Center where we had it last time, where it's on Holly, which is by the train station.
Right. It's by the train station.
Oh, okay. All right. Well, we'll get info on that, okay? And then, future agenda items? Go ahead.
Oh, okay. You know, I, I, it sounds like everyone is working towards some common goals on this whole calendar issue. And so, one of the things I would like to see is if we can just get a report and make sure that, that Trustee Israel or President Frazier sends a list of all of the, the numbers of students and by colleges that they feel have been impacted, and that way we know, and then we can get a, a report from administration on what we have done to proactively mitigate any impact to students. So, I, I think it's probably being done, I think we're doing some common things, but it would be good to have a report. Is that possible?
Absolutely.
Okay. We are going to-
I have-
Oh, I'm sorry. Ms. Baum?
No, I, I want to make sure, I, I think, as we look ahead to our joint meeting, we should do our annual evaluation of the Student Activity Fee Program, and also whether to reaffirm it for another year.
Okay.
Let me consult with President Martin on the scheduling of that, is that okay, Trustee Baum?
It's, it's when, we, we, it's, we, we evaluate it annually, it's something that the board approved, and then said that-
You should be able to-
We'd like to see how it's-
If you'd make a note, Mary, we'll, we'll, we'll take that up in either April or the first May meeting.
Doctor Mann?
Yes, I just wanted to remind people that the, there is an election for Triple CT Board. We do have a, one of our trustees is a candidate, and the ballots are due April 25th, so it needs, this needs to go on one of the April agenda.
It'll be, yes.
Okay, thank you.
It'll be on April.
Okay.
April 3rd.
Good. Just a reminder, it's really easy to forget.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that. Okay, we're going to recess back into closed session, because we didn't get to finish everything that was on the list, so we're going to pick up where we left off on the list. So, thank you all for coming out. I will. I'm going to find- I'm going to find-